Please rise as you are able. I now call this meeting of City Council to order.
The city of Barrie acknowledges the traditional territory of the Yanischnabiki people, which include the Odawa, Ojibwe, and Barawatomi nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We also acknowledge the Wendat nation Huron, who occupied these lands prior to the middle of the 17th century, were dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and recognize the enduring presence of indigenous people on these lands. We're committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. You may be seated. Before we get going with tonight's meeting, it certainly seems increasingly important that we make sure that we sing our national anthem and that we give it the respect and honor that it deserves, living in the best country in the world. Before we get started, I would like you to join me in congratulating Kevin Datema in his promotion to Director of Rec. and Culture Services. Kevin joined the city of Barrie 11 years ago and was the manager of Recreation and Culture Facilities. Prior to Barrie, Kevin was employed at the township of Georgian Bay as a Director of Ops, which included responsibility for roads, infrastructure, recreation programs, parks, and facilities. Over his 21 years of municipal experience, Kevin has built respectful and supportive relationships with the teams that work with him and the many stakeholders in the community. Kevin holds the Certified Facility Manager designation through the International Facility Management Association, as well as the CRFP Designation Certified Recreation Facilities Professional through the Ontario Recreation Facility Association. He also possesses a Bachelor of Sport Management from Brock University, so please join me in welcoming Kevin to the council chambers. Kevin, I'm going to give you a heads up that we're having a bit of a technical difficulty. And next week, your name will be where it's supposed to be for the folks at home who are watching, and we apologize for this week. We're going to move on. We don't have a student mayor this evening, and we're going to move on to the confirmation of the minutes, the first item on the agenda. And the minutes of the City Council meeting that were held December 11, 2024 have been circulated. Are there any corrections from members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? And it carries. We're going to go to awards and recognition, and there's one item here, a presentation by representatives of the Sir Robert Barrie Project Committee regarding the framed HMCS Barrie's Royal Canadian Naval Ensign. I would like to now call upon Bill Sargent of the Sir Robert Barrie Project Committee to provide the presentation of the HMCS Barrie's Royal Canadian Naval Ensign. Now, as Mr. Sargent's walking down right now, he's accompanied by someone who's in great uniform this evening, and we'll let Mr. Sargent introduce him. But I do want to just take a moment, because, Mr. Sargent, you are everywhere and helping everywhere, and you're an unsung hero, or maybe you're a sung hero, and I just don't hear enough, but I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you on behalf of the city, because it doesn't matter whether it's the Legion, it's Remembrance Day, obviously this project, working with our National Relations Committee, like, there's probably another 20 things that I didn't just say, but I just want to say thanks on behalf of council and the people of Barrie. Over to you.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Somebody else running this, or have I got control? Is that you went? Oh, I have control. Thank you. Your Worship, members of City Council, staff, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, the Sir Robert Barrie Committee is here this evening to continue its efforts to raise awareness of our city's namesake and the proud history of our city. And in so doing, we would like to present the people of Barrie with the Royal Canadian Navy ensign that belonged to His Majesty's ship Barrie, which it flew in 1945, 80 years ago, at the end of the Second World War. Barrie was a Flower Class Corvette that the town of Barrie sponsored from 1940 to 1945. Okay, got it. Here's an outline of the presentation. I'd first like to introduce the members of the Sir Robert Barrie Committee. Over here to my left is former Mayor, Honorary Colonel Emeritus Janice Lakeen, who has the distinction of being the longest-serving mayor of the city of Barrie, so congratulations and welcome. The second name on our list is the late Rob Warman. He was a former city alderman, and he was one of the founding members back in 2015 of the Sir Robert Barrie Project. With us as well is Major Retired Jean Maurice Pigeon, a very familiar face to many of us here as well. Sir Robert Barrie himself, aka Master Warner's retired Randolph Rice, and myself, I'm Bill Sargent. Special mention, I'd like to ask Norma Jean Greenslade to stand up. She is the reason that we're here this evening to present the ensign, and I'll get into the providence of the ensign in a few minutes. It was brought here by the First Canadian Army Veterans Ortona Branch Motorcycle Unit back in September of 2021, so this is a long time in coming. And if you look at that, those are not bandits, they're not motorcycle thieves or anything. That was taken at the height of the COVID-19. Now, you'll notice that all of us have our masks on, and none of us got sick at the time. Not that we didn't get sick later, but, you know, that's how it goes. I want to point out as well, and many of you have seen it down in the rotunda, the eight-foot carved wooden ship by Don Houghton. Don did that as a work of love. He had served with the Navy back, you know, in the Cold War, and his passion was to carve ships like that, and HMCS Barrie was one that he did. When we did the painting that hangs in the mayor's outer office, he was one of our technical experts, and there were three things wrong with the painting before it was sealed, and Don pointed them out, and Peter Rindlesbacher, the artist, was able to correct them. So, well done to Don. Unfortunately, he can't be here tonight. I would also like to point out that with us this evening is Mrs. Diane Chislet. Diane, if you'd stand up, please. Thank you. She is head of the Navy League in Barrie, and once again, an ubiquitous presence in the city, so thank you very much for all that you do. We have the XO of the Royal Canadian Sea Cadet Corps Number 53 Barrie, Lieutenant Wixon, and the cadets of the unit itself. Three of those cadets are children of Lieutenant Winslow, so thank you very much. The providence, it's an important part when we're doing history, to know where things came from and to be able to say, that's why that is here. The ensign itself was an original Royal Canadian Navy ensign, and if you could look closely at it, you'll see it stamped right on there, HMCS Barrie. And in 1945, in the Second World War, it was in the possession of Mr. John Parker, who had served on a sister ship, a Flower Class Corvette, HMCS Algoma, from 1939 to 1945 during the Battle of the Atlantic. He gave the ensign to David Lawrence Greenslade, who was a very accomplished musician and a church organist, who had played at several Battle of the Atlantic ceremonies. John had always enjoyed David's organ music and was a guidance counselor at Woodstock Collegiate Institute in Woodstock, Ontario. And when he became so enamored with the music that David had played, he wanted to make sure that he would pass it on to him. Unfortunately, David passed away in April 2019 due to an illness. The last place that David was to adjudicate a music festival was actually here in Barrie, so it's coming full circle with this dedication and donation of the ensign. He passed away a week before the competition. In light of this, and the fact that our city's connection with HMCS Barrie, his wife, Norma Jean Greenslade, decided to donate the ensign in remembrance of her late husband, David, to the city of Barrie. It was delivered to Barrie on September 20, 2021, by the president of the First Canadian Army Veterans Ortona Motorcycle Unit, John Rock, and six of its members from London. And it's absolutely wonderful that it will now rest in a prominent place in your office, Your Worship. If you look at the red circle there, that is an ensign, not this particular ensign, as it would have flown just in behind the smokestack on the Corvette. And if you can only imagine what those 85 souls on that 205-foot ship were going through in the North Atlantic on a regular basis. I know that, I'm glad I joined the Air Force when I did. I would now like to ask His Worship Mayor Nuttall, former mayor and honorary Colonel Emeritus Janice Lakeen, and Mrs. Norma Greenslade to officially unveil the Royal Canadian Naval Ensign and ask Mayor Nuttall to accept it on behalf of the citizens of Barrie. Your Worship, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. First of all, it's wonderful, and I should have done this earlier. It's wonderful to have Her Worship back in the chambers with us, and certainly served the city for many, many years, and then again after that in terms of being on this committee and as a justice of the peace. So I think it's a really wonderful opportunity to have Mayor Lakein in the chambers this evening. But I did want to take the opportunity also to say thank you to Norma Jean for the donation. There's lots of different things that you could have done, lots of folks that I'm sure would have been interested in having their hands out, but coming back as a piece of heritage to really recognize what the city of Barrie and its residents did, what the residents of Barrie did, supporting and sponsoring this ship, naming thereof, and ensuring that we continue with that heritage going forward. I just want to say thank you so much on behalf of the city. I have a certificate, but we also have a painting here for you as well that I wanted to present with Mr. Sargent and with Mayor Lakein as well.
Thank you so much.
So I was able to see where the ensign is.
Absolutely.
Congratulations, Your Worship.
Thank you so much.
I have too close. No, when I get a mic, I talk. And I've got a mic.
You're good, they can hear you.
I'm probably the only one here that actually knew the Greenslades, and I had a cottage next door to them. They had a huge cottage on the water on what is now called Kawaja Beach. And it got its name because the three people that owned the waterfront at that time were Card, Walker, and Jemison. And so they took the first two letters of each of those names, and the beach became known as Kawaja. So that's your history lesson for today. And if I keep this mic long enough, I'll probably have another one.
Former Mayor Lakein, if you could come back for one more picture, and Mrs. Greenslade, please. I'd also like Lieutenant Insokamoa.
You've got to watch out to my right, Sir Robert Barrie's hangar.
Before we do our memorial service here this evening, I failed to introduce one of the most important people to the Sir Robert Barrie Project. We have with us Mrs. Heather Lieben. Her husband and her, on the 20th anniversary of their company, it was the highway construction inspections company, donated a very large sum to the Sir Robert Barrie Project. And we had never been so pleased in our whole lives to have received that, because that meant that all aspects of the Sir Robert Barrie Project could go forward at that point. So Heather, thank you very much. In honor of HMCS Barrie, I would like to honor its crew at this point in time, and I would ask the cadets to ring the bell, but when we do that, we will be saluting. So I don't know if you can call the program back up, and there's a picture of the crew at the end of it. There it is. In honor of the crew of HMCS Barrie, salute. Thank you very much, Your Worship, for allowing us to be here this evening.
Well, I'd like to give about a five-minute break to allow for our cadets. Thank you, cadets, for coming out. Thank you XO for bringing them tonight as well, to leave, as well as anyone who's here just for that presentation, to be able to make their way out. The county, the library, and the police are losing fans right now, but don't worry, there's lots of people at home for you. Okay, thanks, everyone, for bearing with us. Before we get into the committee reports, I did miss the opportunity, and we'll hear later from them, but I want to make sure that I recognize that we have Warden Clark in the audience with us this evening, I think part of our later presentation, so thank you for joining us, sir. And also, our police chief, thanks for joining us here this evening as well. That doesn't mean that we don't love the library, but I just always, you know, recognize those two positions. But if we have a chief librarian, yeah, there we go. Yeah, well, there, recognition. Okay, we'll move into committee reports. Deputy Mayor, that's over to you.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Corser, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated January 8, 2025, now circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Corser, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated January 8, 2025, now circulated, be received. 25G001, the report of the Finance and Responsible Governance Committee dated December 11, 2024. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Corser, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated January 8, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Corser, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated January 8, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. This is 25G002, International Relations Committee Reserve Fund. 25G003, Youth Ambassador Global Perspectives Programs. 25G004, Youth Ambassador Program. 25G005, Q3 to Q4, 2024 Internal Audit Status Update. 25G006, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application, 124180 and 228 Mackay Road, Ward 7. 25G007, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application, 12 Ottawa Avenue, Ward 2. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the committee reports? Seeing none, all in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Corser, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated January 8, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Corser, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated January 8, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. 25G008, Correspondence Concerning Warming Centers and Homelessness. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it carries. We have no deferred business this evening, but we do have a direct motion from Councilors Nixon and Reitma, so I'm going to move over to Counselor Nixon to read that out for us this evening.
Thank you, through your Mayor Nuttall. First of all, I'm requesting a direct motion, although it may not seem like it outside. This is in regards to the BIA Summer Concert Series, so summer can't be too far away. Do we need a vote on whether to proceed?
So you can proceed directly into the motion as it was written in advance?
Okay.
But you do need to read out the motion before you can speak to it.
Okay. Okay. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Reitma. That $225,000 be provided to the BIA for the purposes of a summer concert series to be funded from the Tourism Reserve, with the BIA to repay all funds raised by them in support of this initiative to the city by December 31, 2025, as identified in their correspondence dated January 10, 2025. That in addition to the fundraising to be undertaken, the BIA explore other opportunities, such as sponsorship, to further reduce the city's contribution to this event, and that the BIA be required to keep City Council informed of the schedule of the summer series events once it's established, as well as provide a presentation to the Infrastructure and Community Safety or Community Investment Committee in the fall of 2025 concerning details of the concert series events, including but not limited to attendance, tourism benefits to the city, et cetera, and that, as with other events, the BIA will be required to obtain all applicable permits and approvals through the city.
Thank you, Counselor Nixon. It's moved by Counselor Nixon and seconded by Counselor Reitma. The $225,000 be provided to the BIA for the purpose of a summer concert series to be funded from the Tourism Reserve, with the BIA to repay all funds raised by them in support of this initiative to the city by December 31, 2025, as identified in their correspondence dated January 10, 2025. And then in addition to the fundraising to be undertaken, the BIA explore other opportunities, such as sponsorship, to further reduce the city's contribution to this event, and that the BIA be required to keep City Council informed of the schedule of the summer series events once it's established, as well as provide a presentation to the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee in the fall of 2025 concerning details of the concert series events, including but not limited to attendance, tourism benefits to the city, et cetera, and that, as with other events, the BIA be required to obtain all applicable permits and approvals through the city. Are there any questions or comments from members of council at this moment? See Counselor Morales, and then I see Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I guess I'll also move over to the motions, where I kind of struggled.
of struggled a little bit here, because I was going to ask the BIA. What was the amount? I clicked the memo that they sent, so there's an attached memo to the ask, so I will recognize it for members of the public. Please don't just come here for a quarter-million-dollar ask and summarize it in a memo, in a line. There is at least a letter that they wrote, and they said that, building upon the resounding success of the 2024 events, could either the mover of the motion or clerk staff, refresh my memory, if the city gave a contribution, either from personal reserves or we redirected MET reserve funding towards their 2024 events?
I don't recall there being 2024 tourism money used for the BIA.
Okay.
It doesn't mean it didn't happen, I just don't recall it.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, just to, because there was something in my ear there. It was other dollars that were designated to the BIA, were redistributed to the BIA for the purpose of last summer.
Indirectly, yes and no?
There was actually, there was one budget cut, and then new dollars given.
That were then used?
All BIA dollars.
That were then used for that, okay, perfect. So, the other thing is, I guess, to the mover of the motion, is there a reason that the, was this voted on at the board, sorry, oh, there we go, Counselor Nixon, was this voted on at the board level at a meeting, and that's where the memo, the letter, I'll call it a letter from now on, the letter came from, that then got brought up by yourself, Counselor Nixon, is that what happened?
Thank you. I don't believe there was an actual formal vote on it, but I, in speaking several times with Craig Stevens, the consensus is, this is obviously something that they are very excited about and would like to proceed with, yeah.
Okay, so the letter signed by the Downtown Berry BIA Board, so if I'm hearing there's no formal vote on it, the letter signed by the board, I'm not trying to get picky, I'm just trying to see, like, it's a lot of money, and if there was no vote and a discussion on this, is this just a consensus, and it's okay, like, if it's Craig Stevens and a BIA directive without the board, then I just want to know what's going on here, if you could expand on that?
I see the letter, I see where it says sincerely, "The Downtown Berry BIA Board", I, I will assume that it was then. I may not have been at that meeting, but if it says "The Downtown Berry BIA Board", then I'm assuming that's what it is.
Okay. I'm generally supportive, because that's where the MET funding is for, and the BIA is activators. They're activators, they're the marketing team, there's many ways to call them for what they are, and anything that gets more people downtown and improves the reality of our downtown is great. I'll let my, I will move, no, I'm going to let Counselor Harvey speak, as you already identified him, no, I have to move this amendment, because we're at council. So, I do just want the BIA to come and chat with us, just in general, in general. They've done it in the past before, Mayor Nuttall, and through COVID. The BIA, while not a formally, I'll lean to the clerk for this, while not a formal recognized, like, group, like the library or the police, they were coming previously, and we had some good success, and we were able to ask questions. I'm not trying to make the funding contingent on that, I'm just saying this is a good time to do. Sometimes, when a money ask like this comes, there's good processes we can improve, and when we're getting this kind of money, I don't think it's too much to ask. So, I was writing here a quick amendment, because we're at council, does the Downtown Berry BIA be asked to come make a presentation at your discretion? I mean, it can be a reference committee, or it can be a council where the clerk can slot them in appropriately, but the funding, it's not, the funding wouldn't be necessarily contingent on that. Thoughts?
So, just, sorry, Madam Clerk, before you go there, this was actually a request that I gave to them, and the request was, go and figure out some more ways to liven downtown activity around Maridian Place, and, you know, we've had some big wins on music, we've had some big wins with the air show, with the Butter Tart Festival, with, like, the classic cars, I know those things I'm going to miss, so I, it's not, but they weren't big wins, I just can't remember what they were, but it was something that we asked them to go and do. So, I think that there is more information coming, but that information, as I understand it, will be going out sometime at the January 30 areas, either February 1st or January 30th, or somewhere in that neighborhood. So if there's, like, specific questions that you'd like to get answered, why don't we provide that to them in correspondence, and if you want to leave voting on this for two weeks, what would that put us to?
Sorry, Deputy Mayor Nuttall, January 29.
January 29. Might be a little tight, but, yeah.
I don't want to delay the funding, I don't want to delay the funding. I just wanted to show up, and I think it's a good opportunity. The successes you're talking about, those are things we should be highlighting, and so I think we're speaking the same thing.
So is your amendment, then, essentially an amendment to have them come explain with the dollars, because they want to be able to release that in a marketing plan?
My apologies, if I can clarify to you, Mayor Nuttall, if I can clarify to you, this would be an amendment to, like, do everything that the motion says, and that they come and talk about their general operations.
Madam Clerk.
To Mayor Nuttall, to members of council, there is a standing motion already from the Community Safety Committee that the BIA come and present, I think it's annually or semi-annually, to the Community Safety Committee, so we could just ask them to come and provide updates on their programming as part of that presentation. I don't think a separate amendment is required.
Mayor Nuttall, if one thing, I'm forgetful, but if one thing, I'm consistent, because I definitely brought that up at those previous meetings, and I'm glad it's a standing invite. So I will withdraw my non-tabled amendment, the sentiment remains, and I hope they can share with us the successes of this and other projects.
Yeah, I think that's good, and I'm sorry if I made that more complex than it needed to be. Counselor Harvey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I am very supportive of this, because I have seen the success in other municipalities with a similar thing, and I'll use Newmarket as an example, of a downtown that was lacking, let's say, to turning into a vibrant place, and they started doing the concert series every Thursday evenings, and there was thousands of people jamming into the downtown, trying to get around a much smaller outdoor stage than what we have here in Berry. So, very supportive of it. The only question I do have, obviously, as also wearing my tourism board hat, and this is obviously coming from the Tourism Reserve, where funding was coming from the municipal accommodation tax, would be if the intent, and again, I'm not going to scribe it in as an amendment, but would the intent of the BIA be to work with Tourism Berry, so that way they can ascertain where the concertgoers and the attendees are coming from, so that way in future years, we can actually see the stats on what percentage of people are actually tourists from outside of the area, and also it'll indicate the distances that they've traveled to come.
Is it okay if I answer that question, because I had the conversation with both Kathleen, like you have, as well as with the BIA. The numbers that came back last year, I think, need to be shared. I mean, you've heard them, because you're on that board. I think they need to be shared at the Community Safety Committee, I think it's a really key piece of what's being done. The second piece is, is that in the conversations with the BIA, yes, Tourism Berry needs to be at the table, providing that data back, like, how many people came from out of town, you know, purchased clothing and whatnot downtown, and maybe got dinner or whatever, like, we need to get all of that, those numbers to determine if there is the value there that we're talking about, so the answer is yes. And they've done that with the, I think it's a drone they use, is that, yeah, and it's been very successful to date, and I think we should probably have that data, to Counselor Morales's point, to be able to share it around the table, so we're all at the same place.
Okay, great, thank you.
And just a quick one, before I go to Counselor Rietma, and then I'm going to go around. You mentioned Newmarket. The initiation of this idea came from multiple individuals, okay, but from my standpoint, it came when I was at the Boots and Hearts Festival, ran into Mayor Taylor from Newmarket, who then shared with me how amazing it was for Newmarket, what they were doing, incorporating local music, incorporating sometimes, you know, out-of-town major bands to come in, and everybody was, all of a sudden, you know, funneling to the downtown, and it was flourishing. So when you mention Newmarket, you're bang on, on what I think that we're trying to emulate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm very supportive of this as well, as you know, and I think that one of the things that really intrigues me about this, and I think is something that will really help our locals talent, is sort of that extra hundred, that extra $25,000 that we added to it, to cover the costs of local emerging artists. I think there's a real opportunity here for them to be on a stage and just get to be known, and who knows, we may be getting the next Shadine Twain or Gordon Lightfoot coming out of that. So, I'm, I think this is a pretty exciting opportunity here.
Thank you, Counselor Kungle.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Well, thank you to you for initiating, I think, the promotion of this coming forward, and glad to see it did. There's a great framework here, I've got no concerns about this, and I've had the pleasure of actually having community groups being mentored and actually getting great advice through Stacy, as an example, staff at the BIA, who run really amazing events like Rib Fest, and I think it even can move those large events around logistically the city, and we've seen that happen in other ways. So I have no doubt they will make this successful, the stats that they're even estimating around attracting 350,000 visitors, an estimate of $50 million in economic impact and greater. I think this is exciting. I only maybe comment back, if you're able to relay that through being on the BIA Board. Counselor Nixon, it would be great, just as they formalize this out, once this is known, with the June, July, August, and September kind of highlight is momentum building into our culture days, and some connectivity to some of the things that are activated throughout the season. So, excited to see what this will bring, and it's always nice to kind of look at, you know, promoting almost every weekend an option for Berry and the downtown and broader, and also how do we bring some of that activation out of the downtown, so what we can learn from them, and how can we help to actually kind of create pockets of this activity over time into other key facility areas and parks. It's great.
Thank you, Counselor Kungle, and Counselor Corser.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nuttall, and I just wanted to ask if, I guess this would be directed to Counselor Nixon, through you, Mayor Nuttall, Counselor Nixon, is this time-sensitive? That's my first question. I'm very supportive, I'm just wondering.
It is time-sensitive for two reasons. One is that it's, even though, as I say, it doesn't feel like it out there now, it is coming quick, and it's a matter of booking these bands, you know, a lot of these bands, especially over the summer, you know, you've got to get them quick. So, you know, the idea is to get as many, you know, bigger-name bands as possible, and the sooner you, sooner it's done and approved, the sooner they can sign contracts.
Yep, fair enough, yes. And my second question would be with the impacts of the operation budget that we just passed, with the cost of, I guess, security or maintenance or all the things, would that be an ask coming forward?
No, the BIA already, sorry, I jumped.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
The BIA already has allocated dollars for that. They have both dollars allocated inside of their current budget, as well as now they're, what they're proposing, a proposal we approve, for an amended budget with the increase here this evening. So, they have the dollars necessary to, you know, achieve the security, make sure it's safe, and also, anytime we have these shows at Maridian Place, for instance, you still have to bring in the speakers, bring in the soundboard, bring in the technical team to make it happen.
So with, if I could carry, if I could follow up with that, so they would be funding the waste pickup and cleanup and all the things, and I am very supportive, I'm just wondering where the funding comes from these different, these different things, because I'm learning, yeah.
Yeah, I think the, I think the waste pickup is a thing that's done by the city on city grounds, so we do it in any of our owned catwalks and alleyways, we also do it on all of the streets and throughout the downtown. I think the exceptions to those are maybe the larger events that are on the waterfront, but I'm unaware of there being an increase to the costs that we come from the city to them for the cleanup of garbage or litter or whatever that's left behind, if it is left behind, we hope it's not.
Okay, so the BIA has the money in the kitty for this?
I think the city already does it.
Pardon?
City already does it.
Oh, no, I meant for security.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for everything else, yes, sorry, yes.
Okay, well, thank you, that's my question, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I just want to really tie down where these dollars are coming from, for people at home. The city has something called the Municipal Accommodation Tax, it's partnered between the city and Tourism Berry that Counselor Harvey sits on. Those dollars are brought to the city into this reserve by folks who are staying in hotel rooms, or I believe Airbnb also contributes, and they are put into a reserve to encourage more folks coming to Berry and encourage tourism as a whole. So the, I think the beautiful thing about this is that we're able to attach some out-of-towners taxation they're giving to us to creating more events in downtown Berry and to supporting emerging local artists. All of those are good things, and so we're able to actually increase the programming in downtown without it coming from the people of Berry, and I think that's a great thing. It was something that was proposed by others, and I'm just glad to see it going forward. So, thank you to members of council this evening, and certainly we'll have them come forward and bring forward the results for this year, but before that, we'll get the results from last year. Counselor Nixon, Counselor Rietma, thanks for bringing this forward as well. So I'll call the vote. All those in favor, it carries, and we will move on to our presentations. The library has two separate presentations this evening, so I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that in advance. One of them is related directly to the budget, the second one is related to a request that came from Berry City Council to the library, and so we are going to have those two separate ones, I just want to make sure everyone understands why there's a second presentation from the library. First, we're going to go to the Berry Police, and they are going to come up and start us off for our budget presentations for 2025. I need not remind you, you have 10 minutes, and it's interesting, because it's a role reversal, Mr. Chair, I'm telling you, you got 10 minutes, instead of you telling me I got 2 minutes. It's over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Nuttall, Deputy Mayor Thompson, members of council, and members of the public, thank you for the opportunity to present the Berry Police Services 2025 Budget Request. I am joined here by Chief Rich Johnston, who will speak to some of the operational impacts of the budget as we move through it this evening. There has been a great deal of planning and decision-making to ensure that we are presenting a budget request that is fiscally responsible while maintaining, enhancing operations, addressing the evolution of policing, and providing adequate and effective policing to the city of Berry. Like last year, we have identified three main factors impacting the 2025 budget. They are staffing and service levels, legislative requirements, and technology and innovation. The preparation of any budget of this size presents both risks and opportunities. The first three risks that are identified are legislative requirements, the new Community Safety and Policing Act, which came into effect April 1 of 2024, WSIB legislation for mental stress injuries, and the next-generation 911 provincial rollout. The next two risks relate to upper-level government funding streams. While managing risks, we continue to look for opportunities to reduce costs and increase revenues, opportunities such as reducing costs through expanded wellness programs and innovation, and increase revenues through new grant funding, partnership, and user fees. Lastly, we wanted to recognize that we understand and appreciate the difficult economic environment that many members of our community are experiencing. As well, we will demonstrate throughout the presentation how the service has been able to leverage existing opportunities to minimize financial pressures, avoid significant risks and costs, and make strategic investments in the future of the service. and costs, and make strategic investments in the future of the service. The first building block of our 2025 budget, we have labeled as 2024 carry-forward items. As council may recall, when we built the 2024 budget, we did not have a collective bargain agreement in place. The difference that was included in the 2024 budget presented last year and the negotiated final agreement needs to be accounted for in our 2025 base budget. This, along with the annualization of the approved 2024 new hires, represents a 1.52% impact on our 2025 budget. I would now like to invite Chief Johnson to speak to staffing service to our communities. Chief Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. As we've stated in the past, our members are the core of the Berry Police Service and the service we provide to the community. They are our greatest resource and represent roughly 95% of the total budget. The best measure of service to our community is not sworn authorized complement, which has not increased in the past four years in our rapidly growing city, but rather, the number of deployable sworn officers that are available to work and support our community's safety and wellbeing needs. Our sworn officers not only respond to calls for service, but engage with the community, conduct hotspot patrols, and undertake proactive harm-reducing investigations, meaning they detect harmful crime before it creates a victim. With the board's support, we have been closing the gap between authorized complement and deployable officers each year. For 2025, we have continued with this strategy to replace six members who are currently off on WSIB with mental stress injuries and who are not expected to return to work. The chart before you represents both community-reported and proactively detected harm and the correlation with our resource levels. While increased resources don't necessarily impact community-reported harm, we can see the direct correlation of resource levels with proactively detective harm. We believe this is where we can make the greatest impact and reduce and deter overall crime within the city. The Berry Police Service continues to make concerted effort to engage in proactive policing and proactive patrols of high-harm areas in an effort to deter and prevent crime and harm from taking place. We want to reduce victimization. While our city is growing and unfortunately, community-reported harm is increasing with that growth, we can also see the impact that our proactively detective harm is having. Proactively detective harm refers to things like arrests for drug trafficking, firearms being taken off the street, human trafficking charges, and bail violations. From this chart, we can see that when our, when our proactively detective harm is higher, it aligns with the times when our staffing levels are highest. When we provide our officers the staffing capacity, they're engaging in proactive policing, they're working to make this an even safer city. The city is growing and changing, and with that comes an increased number and complexity of calls, and the demand on police resources to support community safety is greater than ever. Chair, line it back to you.
Thank you, Chief. The second building block of our 2025 budget are non-discretionary items. These are areas of our budget we have little or no ability to influence due to contractual, third-party, legislative, or necessary obligations to meet the needs of the city. Salaries for 2025 are a direct result of the prescribed wage increases within our collective agreement and include all reclassifications, transfers, promotions, premiums, and retirements. Although benefits have increased 0.26%, the overall impact has been minimized through our recent shared open procurement with the city to ensure our benefit carriers are providing competitive rates. Legislative impacts represent provincial directives that impact our budget. The chief will speak to these in more detail shortly, but you may note we have proposed an additional communicator position for 2025 in anticipation of the expanded next-generation 911 platform. Pricing increases experienced from vendors and existing contracts represent 0.2% increase over our 2024 budget. Finally, the last significant impact, we have categorized as growth-related. These represent non-staffing-related items including licensing, data storage, devices, and equipments such as CCTV. Non-discretionary items represent a 4.41% increase in our 2025 budget request. Now I'll ask the chief to speak to our second main theme legislative requirements. Chief Johnson, once again.
Thank you, Chair. Sheriff Ferguson mentioned, we want to spend some time highlighting the three main legislative areas that are impacting our 2025 budget. The first area relates to the WSIB legislation, which was first introduced in 2016 and supports members that are suffering from mental stress injuries. This is a topic we have covered in detail over the past few years and one that will continue to present a significant financial impact to all police services in the coming years with the frequency that first responders are exposed to traumatic events. The chart showcases the increased mental stress injury claims across the province in blue and how the Berry Police Service has been able to minimize and sustain our relative percentage of claims compared to the province. At present, Berry Police Service has maintained the current number of members that are off due to mental stress injuries, and we've had success supporting return-to-work transitions with a wide range of wellness initiatives to support our members and help them manage their exposure and response to trauma. By building a strong preventative and early intervention program, we hope to protect our members from experiencing negative mental and physical health impacts related to their work. It's about building up their resilience. These investments made in member wellness, along with the added mental health supports, have minimized the overall impact to 0.17% for the 2025 budget. With the introduction of the new Community Safety and Policing Act on April 1st, 2024, the service has been adapting to the various new legislative requirements, the three main areas resulting in added costs, our new uniform specifications, active attacker requirements in equipment, and new mandatory training focused on mental health crisis response, incident command, and active attacker scenarios. The service is exploring any and all opportunities to minimize the financial impact through hosting courses in-house, partnering with other police services, and developing protocols to shared access to required equipment and services to meet the new legislation. The final legislative impact is driven by the provincially prescribed next-generation 911 rollout, which will provide additional safety measures and functionality for residents. The service has received 1.5 million in grant funding for the first two phases of this project and has applied for an additional 281,000 in Phase 3. However, the service is also planning and preparing for the ongoing sustainability with the required IT infrastructure, data, security and storage, and the anticipated increased resources in our communications unit required to meet the expanded functionality. Sheriff Ferguson will now come back up and introduce the final section of our budget presentation.
We have categorized the final building block of our 2020 budget as discretionary items. These are areas within the service we look to find opportunities to offset the financial pressures, make strategic investments, and prioritize new staffing requests to ensure the service is positioned to respond to a growing and changing city while increasing transparency and mitigating our risk. Staffing requests amount for a 2.84% increase over 2024 and include the continuation of last year's strategy to replace 12 sworn officers, six in 2024 and six in the 2025 budget request, as part of our goal to increase our deployable officers in an effort to get closer to our authorized complement of 250. Next, with the expansion of our body-worn cameras and the associated work required to store, redact, archive, and prepare for briefings, we are requesting additional resource in our digital evidence and management unit. Lastly, our budget request includes an increase in special constable resources to enhance community safety in our downtown core and support our frontline patrol. Special constables are trained and equipped in a similar manner to our sworn officers and will work directly under their supervision to ensure our community feels safe in our downtown and in our public facilities. Special constables support our police officers in a number of functions that will allow the officer to focus on priority calls. Revenue and efficiencies include increased use, user fee revenue such as paid duties, criminal reference checks, and fixed asset sales, increased interest revenue, and savings achieved in fuel, insurance, and other efficiencies identified throughout the service. Collectively, these have reduced our budget request by 1.9%. Finally, we have included a minimal investment in technology and innovation that will result in an increase of 0.12% to our 2025 budget. The chief will speak to some of the ongoing technology initiatives in our final theme of our budget presentation.
As you may know, I believe in the value of technology can bring to our organization and utilizing new data to implement and enhance evidence-based approaches to policing our community. The technologies listed here are a few ways that we are enhancing our capabilities as a service, increasing safety and transparency to our community, protecting our members, and developing the infrastructure to be future-ready for our growing and changing city. As always, we explore all available grant opportunities to help offset the investments we are making in technology, and the net impact of these and other technologies are 0.12% on our 2025 budget.
With the adjustment to our base budget of 1.52% to account for our collective agreement, combined with our 2025 requirements of 5.47%, our total budget request is $72.2 million, which is an increase of 4.7 million or 6.99%. In conclusion, Mayor Nettle and members of council, the board acknowledges these are challenging times for many. We believe our 2025 budget request is fiscally responsible while allowing the board to meet its obligations within the Community Safety and Policing Act and well below the average increases of other services across the province we're seeing this year. Mayor Nettle, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chief. Are there questions for members of council? I have Counselor Harvey first.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. Through you to either of the presenters. One slide that caught my attention was Slide 8 with the, the call volume increase, which seems to be quite significant over a three, a six-year period where, doing quick math, it's roughly about 30% increase. Obviously, that's putting pressures on the call volume for first responders. And I know you've spoken in the past about other strategies that you're using, especially when it comes to like mental health calls, dealing with these pocket dial 911s and such How have you found those strategies in helping reduce that volume and what other strategies may be able to be used in the future to help mitigate that number? Because obviously, if it keeps on that type of trajectory, your call volume is going to go up dramatically.
Let's speak first, I'll let the chief talk about the strategies. Part of the increase is we're coming out of COVID. So we did see a, not so much a decline, but a stabilization in the calls. So if you take the growth of the city over the period, adjust it for COVID, then coming out of COVID, our calls are coming back up. So that's part of the reason why we see the calls. But as, in terms of strategies, chief, we've got a number of them that we're working on.
I hope we could bring you back up the technology slide, because I think that's an important question and through you, Mayor, to, to counsel the, some of the initiatives that we are trying, the virtual call response, and we're doing that for priority four, three, two, three, and four, which are the lower priorities that may not need an officer to attend immediately, and the idea being, we have officers that are capable in every way, shape, and form, they're just unable to be on the road. And so that we're, we're leveraging their skill set in a manner that makes them productive members of our service, but at the same time, reducing the call volume on the frontline. So the frontline officers may not have to go to that call because they have a face-to-face chat. We also have a new online system for reporting that is far more conducive, it's more intuitive to complete. We think beyond that, we have, and I do note, our partners, one of our partners in the audience with Simcoe County, a strong supporter, and as long, along with the Canadian Mental Health Association, we are piloting in Berry, but for broader expansion, certainly, to the county, but certainly in Berry, getting to pilot it what we call the care team. And we know there is a huge number of mental health calls that are, that are responded to by the police or have been responded to by the police. The, the research coming out of the US and Toronto and a number of other places around a non-police response to a non-violent mental health situation is sending a paramedic and a Canadian mental health worker dispatched by the police, because that call is coming in through 911. Sending that team with a different skill set and a different approach to that. Again, we're not having frontline members attend. Now, if we are required to attend, that, that request is put in and we immediately attend, but we have yet to go and that's been a few months in, in, in action. So that's really positive and we've seen the, the call volume for that increasing. So those are all calls we're not going to. But we do recognize that with a growing city, there's just, there's more volume. That's, it's kind of like traffic. The bigger your city is, the more cars there's going to be. So we do recognize that, but we are taking and making every effort to redirect, divert, but address appropriately the calls where we're able to. Hope that answers the question.
Great, yeah, thank you. I do appreciate the budget that you've brought forward. I know I mentioned it in, on my meeting with you, that when you compare it to what other municipalities are experiencing, this is significantly lower than, than what, I know my counterparts in some of our smaller bordering municipalities that are using the OPP, for instance, because I've been hearing the number between 10 and 20 from them when it comes to percentage increases. And I know Peel, for instance, seems to be the highest increase in the province at 23.3%. So coming in at 6.99, especially when you look at the non-discretionary piece of that 6.99, is 4.41. And as you mentioned in your presentation, 95% of your, your ask is all non-discretionary salaries and benefits. So thank you for bringing forward a very fiscally responsible request, on top of actually adding some enhancements to our downtown, which I think are greatly needed. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harvey. I have Counselor Kungal, then Corser, I just put your names together, followed by Counselor Hamilton, and then Counselor Harris. Are there any other members? And then Counselor Morales. So Counselor Kungal, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle, and thank you, Sheriff Ferguson and Chief Johnson. I'd like, actually liked the structure of the presentation. I think it's, creates a very clear and concise understanding of discretionary, non-discretionary, and different pressure points, as it is a bit of a unique situation. I did have a question and follow-up to kind of having met and I've been able to look at some of the pieces, but on Slide 11 is really where you talked a bit about the WSIB mental stress injury claims. And while not a direct question to the budget you're presenting, I'd like to understand if you're able to speak to it, but maybe not because it is historical. But the significant change around 2017 was about 4.5% drop in claims, and then you kind of held since that time to date with about a 1% variance from 2.6 to 1.6 claims. I didn't know if that was a significant investment or a change in benefits or something that you've done as a change of practice that you're still holding to, and if that was why we're seeing the claims being able to be sustained, knowing that you're taking that investment approach into the wellness of your team, and that comes at a cost. But it's impressive to me that you've been able to hold the line over quite a number of years since about 2018 on a low number of claims.
For worship, I apologize for not recognizing the chair the first time through you, Mayor Nettle. The spike you see right at the top was when the legislation was introduced. So there were a number of, of officers that were felt at the time that, that they needed the help, which was not available. So you see the spike and then that comes down. But while it was at this eight, going to seven, going to six, it was a clear initiative of the board that we had to do something. And it's a clear initiative over the last And it's a clear initiative over the last four, five years. We've expanded our wellness programs, made it a priority of our board, challenged the chief and senior command regularly about the wellness. Our current position is amongst one of the lowest in the province on a percentage basis of officers that are off, that we feel may be permanently off. To my knowledge, there's only one comparative that's less than us. The rest are more on a percentage basis. So that tells us that those wellness initiatives that we've, we've worked hard and put a lot of resources in are working. It also reflects on our association. Our association has worked extremely hard. It's in their best interest to get their members back to work, so they have worked hard. So that partnership between the board, senior command, and the association all working together for the wellness of our members has been able to, one, reduce it down to that one and a half to 2%, and then hold the line.
Thank you for that, yeah, just in looking, knowing that that would have taken some significant investment. But I think the other piece, I'm assuming and looking at it is impressive around being able to hold that line at least until the date of 2022 that you have available. So knowing that that also comes at a cost, but that you've made a concerted, ongoing, impactful, and sustainable investment in the wellness of the team.
Through you, Mayor. We have, the chair has been quite crystal clear in terms of the directive given to senior command in terms of that investment in wellness of our members. And just as a quick highlight, I'd be remiss if I didn't list just a couple of the programs we have, because while there is a cost, it is an investment, and the return on investment is just, it's people. We have baseline psychological testing, before operational stress testing, safeguard assessments for high-risk units, early intervention partnerships with local psychologists, peer support programs, exposure tracking reports, Road to Mental Readiness Program, Chaplaincy Program, Employee and Family Assistance, Strong Mental Health Benefits, Mental Health Incentive Program, and many more. Our people are our entire organization, and that investment has borne out with a low number. It's still too high, but we recognize that there's some things we can't control.
Thank you. And lastly, my compliments to you, because what's not in here, and I know we want to keep this kind of high level and direct, but is also behind this, but also very visible in community, and what I'm hearing many compliments of is the attraction of your citizens on patrol, of your volunteers, of the training and development, but how present they are and responsive in the wards and community. And so in addition to, I think, when you're sharing this, I'm hoping you're feeling that appreciation from us, but also that recognition that while we talk a bit about deployable and being very clear about what that means and why we're seeing some of the staffing up and that ongoing commitment, and the six individuals that you're looking at for this year that was part of the 12, year-over-year, and your target of 250, is that deployability. But in addition to that, where you've really taken that evidence-based approach and been, I think, from the board, from the tone of the top to frontline, I've noticed a really, that proactive shift and tied to harm reduction, the use of analytics, bringing that to town halls in community, but also bringing the citizens on patrol out so the public and for me can see how policing has actually changed around how you're allocating resources to make sure police officers are actually at the high harm calls in a very responsive way. So I thank you for that, and just want to compliment the citizens on patrol program and your investment in that, because I know, I think that's tied under some of the grant funding you look for, and you've been able to keep it going and grow it. So I know that that is a pressure point, but wanted to express that that is very valued, and I hope you see much success in the grants and opportunities to kind of support or let more people know why, why police are looking for grants. And a lot of that has to do, in my understanding, with that auxiliary and citizens on patrol resource.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. I do want to recognize, so 1829, Sir Robert Peel, and the Metropolitan Police was the first professional police service that was created. And there were a number of tenants that were developed then. And one of the tenants was the people are the police and the police are the people. And the citizens on patrol are volunteers, and the very real representation of members of our community who are volunteering their time to be part of public safety and to help the community, and in a very real sense, help people and talk to them and engage with them. And so we're very proud of that program, and we will support it going forward because, again, it's one of those initiatives, but programs that has borne nothing but positive and interactions with our community. So we will continue to support that. Thank you.
No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Congle. Counselor Corser.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to our distinguished guests. I just wanted, thank you very much for having me at the police station, and I wasn't in trouble. I was actually there for asking questions. And I am very much the one that likes to pick on the police and the police budget. But I did want to first congratulate and really appreciate the efforts that are put forward through the Berry Police Department. And the public needs to know this, that I really appreciate the efforts that are being put forth with Berry Police Department and how they are changing the culture of policing. And it's been going on for quite a few years now with the previous chief and with the, of course, continuing on with Chief Johnston. And I, I'm looking at this budget, and 6.99 is a huge number. And I, last year I said, well, I don't want to see these numbers again, basically. But looking very much for this budget, I'm seeing that a lot of it, your hands are tied. This is, this is a lot of government, this is legislation that's been put on you. And with the comparables that are going on in other municipalities, we can certainly take a look at that number. Comparing that is quite significant. But I was, one question I'd like to ask is, how is, with messaging to the public, like I'm seeing this, and I'm like, I was, like I said, I'm the one that picks on police. So as I learn how this Berry Police Services is being run, I'm really impressed with the new care program and all the efforts being put forth. How do we put that messaging out to the public? Is there any, like, I've seen some great programs of, like, you know, I know that marketing is actually an expensive endeavor, which would add more money, but you see some amazing ad campaigns coming through, like New Zealand Police and all the other, you know, different places around the world, and how they address their police department and actually give that, the public a little different perspective or, you know, rehabilitate the reputation. And has there been any thought put forward into doing something like that through the Berry Police Department? Yeah.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Counselor Corser. I'll answer, then hand it over to the chief. Police officers, police services are very humble people, and we've been pushing them to tell the public the success stories. Oh, no, that's not our job. Our job's to serve the city, and no, we need to tell those stories. So we've been pushing the chief and senior command to get out there and tell the good things. And there is a little pushback that, but they're learning, I think, that, you know, we've got to tell those good stories. Chief?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Mayor. So we would like to be measured by our actions. And so we would like to demonstrate that through our behavior daily, and that's how we'd be like to be measured. I will say that we are, we, in my performance evaluation, I believe one of those goals will be to look at the internal and external communications and, but it is a challenge for a culture that just, that is there to protect their community. It's not about telling everyone about it, it's about just doing it. But we do recognize it, and the direction is clear, so we will work on that.
Thank you. And yeah, so like I said, I would like to poo-poo the police, but after learning about all the great work that you're doing and how you're changing how police services and how the, working with the public, how the efforts that you're making, I applaud that. And I have other questions, but I think they're directed towards and through council and what actions we could take. So I don't know if I can ask that question right now during a presentation.
No, I would say if it's about the presentation, ask it. If it's about, you know, procedural items, we have a week before, we're going to discuss it at general committee, so that'd be the time to get it. And if you haven't got the answer by general committee, then certainly bring it up at general committee next week as well.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Counselor Hamilton, I think, was next.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Nuttall, I do not poo-poo the police or pick on the police, but I will say, I always just, when I get a presentation, I look at the bottom line, and right away I saw 6.99, and it's, how am I going to explain this to the residents? But I will say as well, I went through the presentation, and I always find these difficult because we only have so much control or flexibility, right? And so I get that. I just want to pick up on Counselor Harvey's comment in terms of the benchmarking, because actually, when I went through it, and I was, yikes of the 6.99 compared to other municipalities, Berry's budget increase is actually quite below some comparators, Peel Region, Halton, like you mentioned, as is our cops per pop ratio, I think is what Deputy Mayor Thompson says. So my concern actually went to, how does this funding align with our growth and our community needs? Like often in Ward 10, I hear, we don't see the police, right? And, and we get that, you know, maybe we don't have as big a need in some other areas, but it also begs the question, do we actually have enough officers? And are we keeping pace with our growth? And so, not that I want to increase beyond 6.99, but I just wonder, as we're looking, going forward, and really looking at the significant growth in the south end, how is this budget taking into consideration that? Are you finding, you're finding a balance, I'm assuming, but how do we make sure we're not falling below the pace of growth?
Can you put the deployable? Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Counselor Hamilton. What we're seeing in the other services and the big numbers is, what's happening is twofold. They're trying to reduce that gap that we're referring to, to get to their 250 authorized. But what's happening is that authorized line is going up, and the board will be looking at that in 2025, as to what point does the 250 go to 275. And that's when you're going to see, you know, the numbers that you're seeing, and, you know, Peel, that number, when that red line went way up. Specifically answering your question, the authorized complement isn't enough for a growing city. So when that, I think that number is from 2018 is when we did our last analysis, 2017 or 2018, when we did our last analysis as a service, as to what our authorized complement should be based on the growth of the city to this point. But we all, we knew to your point, Counselor, that it's going to go even more, and we're going to have to look at that line and see where that red line should be to deal with the growth of the city.
Counselor, just before you keep going, I think it's important just to reiterate what he just said, what the chair just said, that we've now had eight years at 250 police officers, if you include, if you include the 18, 19, and so on and so forth. And the second thing, I think that, you know, they're being a little bit maybe timid on until the boards had a, had a conversation about it, is that the population, as it grows in the city of Berry, it's attached to taxation, right? So, you know, your ward is exploding, right? And so when you see the city budget, there's $6 million allocated that says, you know, new, new taxes from, from growth in assessment. That's, that's not shared with the police department. So the budget is, when you see the increases that the city doesn't have, and then you see the increases that the police or maybe the library does, does have, or the county, those things are not taken in consideration for them, but they are for us. So I just wanted to.
Thank you for that. I mean, I think this is really good for us to understand, you know, what's coming and what we're looking at going forward. And I think this is really important to include in the communication, to Counselor Corser's point, like, how do we get this out to the public, right? Because again, I think people just look at that number, 6.99, oh, we're overpaying. And I think really, you got to dig down to the nuts and bolts to really understand the budget, as you've explained to us this evening, but also, you know, how it relates to growth. So, so thank you for that. I just want to commend you as well, your work on officer wellness. I won't re-echo what Counselor Congle said, but I think that's absolutely amazing, what you've done. My question was going to ask about what investments have been made, and thank you, chief, for reviewing that. I would just ask about the efficiency gains. I think a slide on there was talking about a projected 1.9 savings in revenue and efficiencies. And I'm just wondering if you can discuss a little bit more about what specific initiatives or changes are contributing to that reduction, if I read that right. I can't remember what slide it was, but it said 1.9.
Sorry, I just had to check with my finance manager because I didn't, through you, Mayor, just to be quite accurate about this. So part of that is with the focus, we do have user fees in some areas where people are coming in for paid services. And as well, we've looked at where we can partner with the city in one case, and certainly we use GIS mapping with a data, a data-driven organization. And so we've been able to partner with the city and find cost savings in terms of some of our licensing for that technology. And so that's actually translated into a 1.9% savings, so substantial from a budget of our size.
Thank you. And if I may, one or two more, just in terms of the special constables for downtown. I know in my Ward 10, and again, usually Ward 10 isn't very focused on what's happening in downtown, because we're moved in the south, but I was talking to Counselor Morales, and I would say this past summer, really, there was a shift, and there was a lot of concern as to terms of the safety in the downtown area. So I think this is actually a welcome addition, but I just wonder if you can elaborate a little bit more in terms of what those special constables will utilize for, what, you know, days, hours, that type of thing, and what sort of contribution they'll be, they'll be adding to the downtown safety.
Certainly through you, Mayor, to Counselor Hamilton. So the addition of the special constables are going to be specifically, is a continual patrol of the downtown around public buildings, including City Hall, but as well as other publicly-owned buildings, but always with an eye to being incredibly visible. So, and you'll see, this past summer, you saw a pilot program kick off, and I think it was well-received. So for lack of a better term, we're turning that up a fair amount, and you're going to see a lot more of us in the downtown, and we recognize. And it's a great, and I, I don't want to make light of it, it's, we're very privileged where our community is almost always happy to see us. And we have an impact that people feel safer when they see us, and they, and again, we engage with our community in a professional manner, but the idea is, you're going to see a lot more of us in the downtown, and it clearly is going to be a very busy and vibrant downtown, which it has been. We just want to ensure that people, while they are safe, we want them to remind them that they feel safe, too. And so I think that's, it's a complex mix, but I think you're going to see far more, you're going to see them every day in the downtown and certainly into the evening. So I won't speak operationally to the specific hours, but I can certainly explain that you will see them in the, in the early morning right into the evening.
Great, thank you. Happy to hear about those extended hours, because I think that might have been a gap this past summer, so I think that'll be welcomed. And I do, won't get into it now, perhaps a conversation for offline. I do hope there's opportunities for those patrols to be done in partnership sometimes with mental health workers or other community agencies. I think that could help, too, just given some of the, you know, population downtown and some of the safety issues we're hearing. You're welcome to comment on that now, but just sort of a plug that I hope it's done in collaboration.
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Hamilton. I'm certainly going to take your opportunity, because we have an MSERT team, where an officer's working with a mental health worker. We do have the new care team, which we're dispatching, but what we're seeing is that intersectionality of addictions and mental health. Not always, sometimes they're separate, but it is one of those where you bring the right skill set to the right challenge or the right issue that you're trying to assist or mitigate. And I think it depends on what's needed at the time, but certainly that's part and parcel. We are working with our community partners always.
Thank you. No further questions. Appreciate the presentation. And again, I think the challenge for us is just always communicating to our residents. So I think you've done an excellent job breaking it down, and hopefully we can support in the communication efforts as well. So thank you.
Counselor Hamilton, for more information on the hours, some of that won't be public, but you can go and speak with CAO about it, who's certainly putting requests. At the end of the day, it's a police thing, not a, not a city thing. But, but I think that if members of council want more information on that, you certainly can go get it, okay? Counselor Harris, and then Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall, and thank you, Chair Ferguson and Chief Johnston. Just a quick question on the mental health support collaborations. Is some of that funding, and if it is, that would be a Is some of that funding, and if it is, that would be a good thing, that you get for the police services funded through other ministries? Do we get a little bump from other ministries for that?
Through you, Mayor. Counselor Harris, yes. So we, along with our partners, made concerted efforts with a very receptive Ministry of Health and Ministry of Mental Health and Addictions, Assistant Minister Tobolo. And this was a very innovative approach in terms of, we looked at the research that was out there, and we're one of the first, and we're a pilot, and we're certainly happy to see it go across the county, but initially, within the city of Barry, to see how effective it can be. And so those funds came directly from those two ministries.
Yeah, that's great. I know traditionally, coast teams have had like a 60/40 health. So it's good to see that the police can get additional services through other means and funding sources. That's great. Just, I appreciate your approach to evidence-based and data, and really, modernizing policing and using resources effectively, and your respect for the reality that it's tough times right now, and increases are done with great concern and caution. So thank you for that. I was looking at deployable resources, and, you know, on the positive side, from this term of council, we're seeing with 2025, this budget moving forward, 19 more sworn deployable officers, that's great. The downside is, we're still 12 below the 250. So, you know, but I think we're going in the right direction. I guess the question I have, and I've asked this question, I came across it, actually, it was through Chief Greenwood, was the cop-to-pop ratio, and Counselor Hamilton noted that. Just curious, if you were to plot the cop-per-pop ratio on the deployable resources, Slide 6, how are we doing with our population growing, but we're modestly decreasing our deployable? But are we losing ground on cop-to-pop? Is our cop-to-pop ratio going down, actually?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Harris. Yeah, it is going down. Now, the most recent data for a comparative side is 2023. So we know where we're at in 2024 and where we'll be at 2025 if council approves this budget. We don't know the comparative. We're at about 150 per 100,000. I believe today, we're about 158, 59. So when we add the six that we approved last year, and if we get the six this year. So we're at the low end, but we are climbing up with the addition of the six. We don't have the data for 2024, and obviously, for 2025 to compare it. So we're at the very low end of 2023 in the province. I think we're at, I had the numbers here, And the provincial average is, do you have it there? Provincial average is 171. And the national average is 176, and we're at 148. But I think we're closer to 155, 56 today. But we can't, I don't have a comparative as to national or provincial numbers.
Yes, thank you very much. It really speaks to, I mean, you know, we want to see efficiencies, effectiveness, and economics, but also, we need to have the services to actually deploy for our residents when they need it. And, you know, and we're growing, and that. So I think what I see is a very responsible budget that really shows good value. And we know that, based on what you've just shared, the cop-to-pop ratio, we are significantly below those averages. And just curious, as far as it goes to making good decisions as best you can, as far as what should the pop-to-cop ratio be? What should our deployable assets be as we look toward the future? What are the key metrics that you use to make that determination?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Harris. We look at our comparatives, and who are they? Guelph, Kingston, Chatham, Kent, Sudbury. So, you know, we can't do it, we don't think it makes sense to look at some of the major regional services or the major Ottawa, Toronto. Those, Guelph's 150 is very similar, Chatham's 155, Sudbury's 163, Kingston's 163. So we're a little behind what we would consider our comparatives at the 150 today. But I do believe that has shrunk with the addition of six in 2024. And if we have the additional six in 2025, I think we'll get closer to our comparatives.
Great, thank you. And maybe one last question. Is there, in Calls for Service, Slide 8, and it was noted that increase? And you mentioned, I think, and fair to talk about the impact of COVID, but still, we're well above the first year pre-COVID, which would be 74,000. And I know we're growing. Just curious, is there an expected kind of range of calls per service, per 100,000 people? That, he said, listen, wow, our community is getting called at a rate that's far below our competitors, that you noted, like Guelph and those communities. Is there a comparative on that, so we know how much police activity we should expect in a community? Therefore, as we grow, we can kind of budget our resources accordingly?
Through you, Mayor. So there's a challenge there, and I mean, even any measurement of any police activity, and I hate to say it's always complex, but this is complex. So when you look at a number like that, you have to dive deeper into terms of what that number is made up of. So regardless of what the number is, a certain percentage of that is priority zero, priority one, two, three, and four. And so when you look at that, what percentage of that is priority zero, which is an immediate response, which means we should have been there yesterday? Like, that's a life-saving situation, or a challenging situation, versus a priority four, where it can be attended to at a later time for an extended period of time? Maybe there's another way to report that. And what I can tell you about our number, and I can't speak to actually other services, and I apologize, I just, with respect to the makeup of their numbers, we've seen a fairly stable, but slightly increasing priority zeros. And so that's, and those priority zeros and ones make up about 30% of our calls. And that is to be expected. That's why we exist as a 24/7 operation. That is not skyrocketing. We're certainly seeing, you know, there's that, the 911 hangups and calls like that, and there's a challenge there. Beyond the simple interpretation of that number, I would certainly dive into, and I don't want to belabor it, and I do appreciate the time, with respect to what your city, there's no magic number for any city. Because certainly, if we, and the danger of cop-to-pop is like the understanding that if you have the most police officers, you're the safest city. And I will be the first one, I'm like, that is not what I am arguing, and I don't believe this is, it has to, it depends on the makeup of your city and the challenges you face. I think there's a responsible number, and certainly, we've seen cities in Ontario that have far greater officers to population, but face greater challenges. And so there's also the crime severity index, and there's a whole host of challenges around that. But certainly, when you look at our comparators with that, taking into account the census metropolitan area, and I will say that out loud, because it's important to, but with our comparators, when you're trying to measure those, so Thunder Bay is a 97.83, but we are a 48.05 crime severity index, which is the, with the census metropolitan area in the province, in Canada, actually, would be one of the lowest. So it depends. And I, probably an unsatisfying answer, but that is, into details I can get right now.
Thank you very much. Maybe one final question, Mayor Nettle. Just, is that, you know, and again, in the work that you're doing with evidence-based policing and use of data to inform planning, is that kind of knowledge gap or evidence gap closing as far as those metrics that help project or predict what you would need in the future for services? Is that getting better, easier? I know it's not easy. You explained, just explained it wasn't.
Through you, Mayor. So when we look at even our, when we look at evidence-based policing, the research around, and, you know, where we're most effective and proactive policing. The problem with our current measurement in this nation in terms of police measurement of any kind is, it's not purposeful, but the way it's measured, it actually punishes good police work. So if we are out there and proactively break up human trafficking rings and great traffic stops with investigations and find firearms and drug traffickers, and bail violations, and those individuals that are committing harm before they're actually committing more harm, your crime severity increases, even though there's no actual new victim. It's proactively detected. And so there's a challenge there. So that's why when we're measuring our crime, and we're looking at ours, our crime metrics, we look at, are we seeing our proactive policing increase? That means something. We're challenged with community-reported harm, because even then, that is a, the challenge there is, look, what we know from the research is less than 3% of sex assaults are reported. So our metrics are based on 3%, so they can fluctuate. And even then, it's a challenge. So if they start to go up from 3% to 5%, is that more sex assaults are occurring, or are people starting to trust the police or the justice sector even more? And then all of a sudden, that's not a bad thing. It's bad that it occurred. But the fact that someone decided to report it and suddenly had faith in our system, or faith in a system that's, like, they're the investigators, or we've become more trauma-informed and victim-focused, that's not something to, it's just a, the metrics are just not simple, because crime by nature is challenging to measure. And so we are, with our metrics, looking at, you know, where's our proactive policing? Where does our community-reported harm? As well as our commercially-reported harm, which we have no control over. If commercial entities invest heavily in loss prevention, that number will skyrocket. Because it's not that it's occurring more, they're detecting it more. So we are measuring it. What we want to see is increased proactive policing on a regular basis. And we just, the communication to our community is, if that number in proactive policing is going up, it's not an unsafe city. It's just you have a whole organization that is focused on getting out there and finding crime before it occurs and more victims are created.
That's great, thank you.
Mayor Nettle, if I could just add to that? Just before we move on? The, we're consistently around 20% to 22%, what we refer to as emergency calls to non-emergency. That percentage is staying pretty steady. So it's the non-emergency. And that's where with the alternative call-response, we think will really help us. The challenge we have, though, is the non-emergency, the complexity of those calls, and the complexity of the investigations. That's going to be the challenge. The percentage is staying relatively same, but more complex with a growing city. And that's the real challenge we face. Thank you, Mayor Nettle, for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Chief. Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I've got three identified questions. Don't let me ask more than three, because we've got a lot of people waiting. Okay, so thank you for the presentation to both of you, Mr. Chair, Chief. So last year, recalling some of the comments I had said, last year I said that, or yourselves, but organizations in general that don't tell their story, have their story told for them. I just want to give you some personal feedback. I've noticed that you've, that as an organization, you are doing more. I'm seeing the social media accounts post more. Meta has still not adhered to the federal changes. It's not government-clamping down. I know, it's trying to them actually provide a fair funding model for journalism. But they still haven't signed on. Google has, X has. And so unfortunately, when you, you know, when news sources are blocked from where, in the mediums, the mediums that people are consuming information, it becomes more imperative for organizations such as yourselves to communicate that. And I'm seeing that more. I understand there's challenges, like your comm staff isn't working at 1:00 AM, right? And if something gets posted, it's stressful. So I understand that. But what I am glad to see of Meta is like, they now allow, if you post it, you can keep the comments open, and then you can lock them. It's almost like locking your door on the way out of the building, and then maybe reopening them again. So, and I trust that you guys are always being innovative. So, and then for specific posts, I'm glad to see that sometimes you're posting more of that celebratory posts, those good stories. Might be, you know, every year it happens, the ducklings need some help across the street, but it's more than that. And going back to your point, Chief, about people trusting the cops, it's not just a really disgusting and grave event, such as sexual assault, but it's also just the simple things of, in an ideal world, we raise our kids to go to the police when they're in distress, not run away from the police when they see your vehicle. So anyways, I just want to give some of that positive feedback. You're doing more. I think there can still be more that can be done, because you need to tell your story more, but I wanted to highlight that. Number two here, again, seeing a lot on social media and even hearing from residents, sometimes, and this is throughout many police forces, and obviously, it's online banter, but like, they go, oh, I had an issue with this, I called, and they said, like, we'll get to it if we can. Or they just flat-out say, like, we can't. I'm not picking a story specifically, but I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, because I know we have a robust auxiliary officer program. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, so asking to either of you, for Barry Police to revamp, grow, augment that auxiliary officer program? And again, I don't have any experience whatsoever of jurisdiction of when do you send the police with the gun on their holster versus a trained auxiliary officer who may not have that capacity as it relates to things such as fraud, stolen property? And I don't mean like something severe. I mean like, you know, mom calls, hey, my teenager had their cell phone stolen, we're paying it in this location, things of that nature. Because again, I know, we've always had a robust auxiliary program. And I'm wondering if we can continue to prioritize high need calls while also still providing the customer service that I personally may be hearing and seeing that some residents are just feeling a little bit disappointed with, and finding that equilibrium balance. So I'll turn it over to you for now.
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Morales. So thank you, Counselor. The, in particular, and I'll speak to fraud, because it's one of our most voluminous-type crimes. It also has a fairly, relatively high harm score, because there's so much volume of it. And in particular, that one lends itself to more of, and again, part of it is the adoption by the, and the comfort level of people using the new technology. That virtual-type call online does help, but there's almost, I would hesitate to say, rare is it ever where a fraud call doesn't have a paper trail, electronic paper trail of some kind. And so that can certainly be done virtually, where there's an exchange of information between an officer, a sworn officer, and it's, again, capable to take all that information, to investigate it, but to do so from an office with a computer right in front of them, and to do all that's required. But where we're able to, we're certainly leveraging our auxiliary and looking, again, and I'll hearken back to the citizens on patrol. The idea is that they want to see our presence that can somehow address or dissuade or deter our presence uh that can somehow address or uh dissuade or deter that um that behavior that people don't want to see. We recognize that. Um, there are times, though, where you need an officer, um, and we do recognize that as well. And and certainly we prioritize based on harm. And so that is, if there's a threat to life, that has to take priority. We protect property and we recognize that. But harm has to be the priority of any police service that wants the legitimacy of their community.
And and thank you for that through you, uh, Mayor Nono. I bring that up for two reasons. Uh, we don't want people to lose trust in the institutions, right? And institutions. I include civic civic City Hall and 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 police headquarters, that's those civic institutions. And uh, in addition to that, we don't want some people to take justice into their own hands. So, right, initially, something might not be a call, uh, but apparent this is the third time their kid had their backpack stolen or their stuff, and they just lose it, they go over and or cell phone, insert scenario here, and escalates it. I again, I I I personally have trust in the uh triage system. I was just wondering if uh, you know, uh, auxiliary officer program could be leveraged just the way you're referencing to leveraging paramedics uh in 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 uh kind of crisis intervention calls. That is, that is almost the same thing I'm talking about, leveraging your resources. You don't need three guns showing up to an self call. You might need a paramedic and a cop showing up just in case. They assess the situation, say, okay, we're we're confident enough to pull back. So um, that's why I bring it up. And finally, I ended quickly with kind of a positive note. I always look for innovation and efficiency. Uh, Chief, that's one of your strong suits even before you became Chief. Uh, we had a great interaction. Me may have told the story last year. I go into your office to meet with you in your in your role as deputy, and I have all these innovations. I'm like, you know, we're moving toward TVs. They've got big screens. Why are we spending thousands of dollars on 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 auxiliary laptops? And on your screen, and nobody knew this question was coming. Uh, you didn't have the heads up. And on your whiteboard, you have how like you were already working with your IT team and manufacturers in order to integrate that in a safe, secure manner for our information and efficient. And uh, to Counselor Hamilton's point about a section about efficiency, that's not going to move the needle necessarily, but it's the culture of innovation that I'm glad to see in the police force. And um, I'm also, I guess, here's also kudos to the motion sensors and cells. That's innovation. That's safety for detained or arrested people, uh, guilty or innocent or somewhere in between. Uh, that's safety for uh um officers and attending staff and possible less PTSD responses if there's incidents that they kind of walk in on. And uh, I kind of saw you light up a little bit. So if you want to talk about that, because I caught that on the slide, as well as I'm wondering how many more years until we're at the stage where we start getting data back on um uh EVs, where we come back and we go, hey, look, uh, there was a twenty percent reduction both in operating and maintenance and when you account for capital, or maybe it's lower, maybe it's higher. So we can uh kind of have some hard numbers to back up that ROI.
Through you, Mayor, to uh Councilor Morales. So uh, thank you for the opportunity. And certainly, uh, we we do have some numbers with respect to the EVs and the, I mean, thirty-three percent of our fleet is hybrid. Um, there are a number of, a handful of uh full EV vehicles, but what we found is the greatest savings there in terms of uh idling, not recognizing that internal combustion engines are destroy themselves when they're idling. But quite honestly, when police are going to a call and that car is idling and it's required to idle, um, that's where we saw the the most damage uh to the wear and tear of the vehicle. Uh, with respect to the cell monitoring, um, that is, and I just to, it is, uh, as uh, as you've pointed out, uh, it is, yes, it's liability reducing, but we do recognize we are public safety and anyone who comes in our building, we are responsible for their wellbeing. And so if you're in our cells, um, if you've imbibed something we're unaware of, that passive monitoring is giving us heart rate. And it again, the signage is up, letting you know that this uh this data is there. It's it's, we don't keep it. We just collect it for the purposes of your stay, um, to make sure that um you're um you're healthy and well, and you come in and you leave. And at the end of the day, I think that's incredibly important in terms of, again, trust and legitimacy as an organization. Everything's videoed. That's great. But we're still respond like, how is that person doing? And um, we recognize that. And we were one of the first to adopt that. And I think that was um big, a strong believer. We'd have visitors from other police services come. And I believe that that's what they're looking at, putting in post um uh to retrofit their stations because it is that important.
And 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 final, a comment, uh, Mayor Nono, to your point about your, you and everyone else's strong efforts at reducing um people just that aren't leave, they're never coming back. I'm not saying that would be a the fit thing, but if you can reduce incidence of of traumatic events, uh, whether non-related health issues that they had or some sort of trauma response where officer just walks in and someone's dead, I'm sure that doesn't exactly help uh mental health. So the fact that, A, yes, keeping the person alive, period. That's paragraph number one, full stop. But in addition to that, all of these things, and that's why innovation in in a service like yours is so effective and and the culture that yourself specifically and a lot of people bring. So uh, thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilor Morales. Um, any other questions from those who've not participated yet? Well, thank you so much, Chief. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, for uh your presentations this evening. We're a, it feels like a very, very long time away from the Defund the Police moments. Um, and so uh, seeing the uh, the community and the council, I think we were representative of the community. Um, tonight, I think it's a very encouraging thing that you can take back to uh to HQ. And the other thing I wanted to to point out is you've six last year, uh, six this year in terms of new officers. That's, that's not getting us ahead. That's trying to catch up. Um, but there are far more uh special constables that have also been uh approved. And uh, so I think that we can take the year and we can understand where the effects of these decisions we've made um are are landing. Uh, but I don't think that uh our our police folks uh should feel that they don't have the support from from council to be safe and be secure and make sure our community feels safe and secure as well. I think it's a pretty robust uh support, if you ask me. So thank you again for your presentation. And you don't have to stay for the rest of the presentations if you don't want to. The library folks are really unhappy that they do have to because they got to be the last ones.
We appreciate the opportunity. We appreciate the questions. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sounds good. Thanks so much. Uh, we'll move next into the uh, to the, you know what? Can I ask the Berry Public Library, uh, because you're making two presentations, could I have the county go first? And if they want to stay for the library presentations, they can, but if they'd like to leave, they could as well. Uh, because I know there's folks coming from out of town there as well. Is that okay with the Berry Public Library? Perfect. Is council okay with that if I uh bring down uh the county first? And uh, and then we'll go into the two separate library presentations.
Is this where you would like us, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Thank you for having us here.
Got you right where I want you, Mr. Warden.
Yes, and I thank you for letting us come ahead of the library, and I apologize, but I know you were stuck waiting at our county council meeting yesterday for a long time, and I I apologize for that as well. Whenever governance on the table, the meeting can really drag on. So listen, we're here again to present on behalf of the services that we run seamlessly across Simcoe County and with the city of Arilla and Berry, being a very intricate partner and part of that system with many of our hubs located right here in the city of Berry. And we do value that partnership. We're presenting, of course, on Ontario Works, children's services, community services, our homeless prevention, business intelligence and system planning, social housing, which is our Simcoe Housing, Simcoe County Housing Corporation, our social housing nonprofit, paramedic services, and long-term care. I've got my team here today. I've got our general manager, Mina Faez-Baghet, which is social and community services, our general manager, Jane St. Clair, which is health and emergency services, and our GM, Trevor Wilcox, which is corporate performance. And we always bring our treasure, Leland Civic, with us, uh, just to answer any of the real tough questions. Uh, just before I turn it over, I I want to thank the city of Berry with helping us get that warming center open on time. I know you guys really moved walls to help us. There was issues with the building that had to be done. Your staff worked seamlessly with ours to get that open on time because so critically needed this time of year, along with the relocating of our rapid rehousing project, because the timing was critical on that with buildings coming from out west at the same time we're moving locally. And it all, it worked seamlessly. Thank you very much for getting the permits through on time and helping us get that done on time. And I have to thank and congratulate your fire chief on the recent small emergency you had with the seniors building. And uh, he was critical in handling that situation. He took charge. He organized the evacuation. We were there for that. You organized the cleanup. You got everything back in shape and got those people back. And I would say in record time. Well done, sir. So a certain congratulations to your fire chief. With that, I won't keep you any longer. I'll turn it over to Mina, who will start off.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, good evening. Um, and through the mayor, I'll I'll just run through the presentation. I think we'll jump to slide five. Do I have, I do have to click there we go. Um, so our first service area of the the five areas that we serve is uh Ontario Works. Uh, so this year in the 2025 budget, it's actually good news. The Ontario Works budget is actually coming down by six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars uh from comparative to last year. The key key driver here is a considerable increase in administrative funding that we receive from the province. After seven long years, uh, they've increased the administrative level. So it's a fifty-fifty split on admin, but that was locked to two thousand and eighteen numbers. Uh, and now that's been relieved. Uh, so we took that money and invested it in a few key things. Uh, 2025 will be the first year of our major development at Rose Street, and that's going to come up a little bit later in the project. But with it is, uh, we took this funding and we invested in all the office equipment and supplies that we'll need when we move in and hopefully uh mid 2026 to, uh, yeah, probably mid to late 2026, uh, with the tower, the first tower going up with the um, the building uh of the offices in the community hub space. Uh, the caseload is actually going up, but this is a case-based funding that's fully funded through the province. So whether the cases go up or down across the county, it's fully hundred percent funded from the province we flow through. And that's really just the income subsidy that goes through. But if you'll see here, actually amongst the county, the city of Arilla and city of Berry, there's slightly very little change, uh, essentially recognizing that most cases are staying put and not kind of moving between the three, which is a a unique difference than past years. Um, and then we'll just jump into the um, the next one, which is uh children's services. So really quickly here, the early learning childcare program is the federally funded program better known as um the Canada-wide early learning and childcare. And that's called C-WELC, which is the ten dollar a day uh program. We're in year four of five of that implementation. So right now in 2025, the guidelines have been set by the province for twenty-two dollars per day for childcare. So we're closing in on that ten dollar mark. Here, childcare um hasn't increased, uh, and the reason being is that we invest the administrative costs for the service into a reserve fund starting in 2021. So for the last five years, it's remained at this level. And the uh, we anticipate another four years of it remaining there. Um, interestingly, with this one, it is a mix of how the contribution agreement is structured. So I wanted to share just very quickly here, the level of services provided in the city of Berry by percentage compared to the overall county. So licensed childcare providers, thirty percent of them are found in Berry. And the more importantly, the sixty-five hundred spaces represent thirty-seven percent. Licensed home childcare is at seventy-seven percent of the approved providers are located in Berry, and forty-five percent of those spaces are found in Berry. Early on childcare centers, you have two main sites that represents twenty-nine percent of all early on child and family care centers and seven satellite sites, which is twenty-four percent. Special needs resourcing, which is operated through our hospital programs and partnerships, is at thirty percent, serving eleven hundred and fifty-four children. Fee subsidies, um, and this is how it's driven by cases. This is an interesting one. It's at forty-four. Without the contribution from reserves to maintain admin, this would be a higher hit on the on the city of Berry. However, in the next four years, while we hold it at zero through the reserve contribution, these cases will be replaced by ten dollar a day subsidies. So the majority of that caseload, uh, once we're fully implementing C-WELC, will drive that number down to only a sig- a very small portion of of the caseload of people who cannot afford ten dollars a day. So you'll see a considerable difference. So the idea is by 2029, when we fully exhaust the resource, the reserve funding that we've put to admin funding to keep it at zero, in 2029, the ten dollar a day program will take full hold. And by then you'll see that caseload drop considerably. Um, and then finally, recreational programs, there's three programs out of the seven running in Berry at forty-three percent. Next slide is community services. So community services is comprised of two areas, uh, obviously homelessness and homelessness service supports and our business intelligence and policy team. The business intelligence and policy team we introduced in 2023, uh, in anticipation of what happened in 24, where the province and the federal government made data entry into hyphes or requirement of funding, um, and or losing funding if you don't do it. So if you go to opensimcoe.ca, you'll see some of our new information, both on the housing side and the homelessness side, not only daily usage and capacity, uh, and time over time trend analysis, but also we've introduced a new homelessness um aggregator. Um, you should take a look. It kind of breaks down homelessness into different factors and demographics, which is required by both federal and provincial governments. Um, and then secondly, here, in year, we were moving resources as we grew the homelessness programs. Some of the things the Warden had shared earlier, the rapid, we introduced four rapid rehousing programs this year, uh, two of them located in Berry. This is part of our ten-point strategy to create more space in the shelter system by exiting chronic users, entering them into a rapid rehousing program in order to keep flow going in those beds and shelters to bring people from outside in. Uh, so we're excited to see those programs start up. We're focusing on seniors in Berry. So currently, right now, there's seventy-seven seniors staying in shelters, forty-four are in Berry. So all forty-four would have access to the new spaces created, allowing them an opportunity to exit shelter permanently. And the idea here is hopefully by mid 2025, with the results of rapid rehousing, we could state that we've ended chronic homelessness for seniors in shelters. So that's um a goal that we'll hopefully be celebrating six months from now. Uh, and then we moved resources from within Ontario Works and within our poverty reduction teams to focus more on homelessness. This was an internal switch. So the overall impact is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, despite all the investments we made in homelessness in Berry and across the county, uh, this is just reflective of just um non-discretionary change in in levels uh with a new collective bargaining unit that took hold in 2025. Next one, really quickly, uh, Simcoe County Housing Corporation. Um, so we opened two buildings in 2024, one in Arilla and one in Bradford. With it came um our our new housing first um spaces. And these spaces are essentially for strictly for those on the by-name list experiencing homelessness to get directly housed into community housing. Uh, here, you know, we, as we grow, we introduce positions like the tenant navigator that support those housing first units. This is a supportive housing program where you enter a participation agreement for two years before you sign the lease. And the idea is to slowly get you integrated into community housing before um you're obligated as a, under the Residential Tenancy Act. Um, and then finally, um, big developments happening, um, including phase one of the the Berry uh Rose Street build. This is going to be the largest build uh in the county's kind of uh community housing development history. Two hundred and twenty-one units mixed income community with a community hub space and a co-located set of services of uh offices, which actually will drive down our Ontario Works and Children's Service administrative costs as we now move out of rental into our own space. Uh, and then we're planning about seven million dollars of capital compared to the aging stock, uh, of which um thirty percent of that is going to specifically for properties in Berry, including a significant investment of about a million dollars going into Blake Street, our seniors tower um on in the south, south Berry area. That will hopefully begin the strategy of trying to create mixed income communities in those more valuable locations where we can garner more rent to create more revenue in community housing. And on the nonprofit file, we're seeing an increase of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, and that's just reflecting a few things. The decrease in federal funding of those like legacy ending of operating agreements, uh, and then the swap out of having to increase our revenue, our municipal rents up to offset that decrease in funding. Uh, here again, uh, main driver of this increase is the provider loans for the nonprofit providers, that to keep their stock alive. Uh, as we create more housing, we don't want to lose housing at the same time. So this is locking them into new agreements, multi-year, twenty-five year agreements in exchange for capital loans to maintain and address their capital backlog. Again, you're seeing here about twenty-nine percent of that, those loans are going to nonprofit providers in Berry this year. So that's, I tried to do that as fast as possible to respect the time. So sorry if I spoke too fast. I'm going to hand it over to GM Jane St. Clair for um for part of the presentation.
Thanks very much. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I'll start by by presenting on uh long-term care. And just to very quickly recap, we have four long-term care homes across the region, a total of five hundred and forty-four beds, and we have two construction projects underway, uh, one for sixteen beds at Georgia Manor Penetang Machine. We will be opening those beds uh later this year. And the second is the thirty-four bed increase in our Simcoe Manor Village project in Beaton. Um, in addition to our long-term care homes, we provide additional long-term care services from a regional perspective. So these include convalescent care. We have five specialized beds in one of our long-term care homes. Uh, we have peritoneal dialysis that we provide, that specialized service from two of our four long-term care homes as well for the region. Um, we also have a couple of coordinators, one to provide digital health services to all twenty-six long-term care homes in uh in our Ketchmon area, as well as a French language service coordinator for our long-term care homes. Um, and the last, but certainly not least, is our Behavioral Supports Ontario funded program. This is a very large program. Um, we provide behavioral support through what we call a geriatric mental health program. We have a staff of thirty-nine uh individuals as part of this program. We just received uh funding, uh, just reported to county council. Uh, we are funded for an additional uh nurse to this program. So again, these individual nurses are stationed or based in all twenty-six, including the nine long-term care homes here in the city of Berry. Next, looking at paramedic services. Uh, we currently have a staff of approximately four hundred and ninety-two in paramedic services. It is a growing uh service area. Uh, on the emergency management or emergency response side of the equation, we have both primary and advanced care paramedics. We operate from seventeen stations, including a great partnership with the city of Berry, the Berry Simcoe Emergency Services Campus. Um, and on the community side of our paramedic services program, uh, there's a number of areas I'll quickly highlight. One, the PAD program, our public access to fibrillator uh program. We have currently eight hundred uh pads or public access to fibrillators across the region, uh, including two hundred and eighty-seven here in the city of Berry. Um, and on the community uh paramedicine uh program, which I'll talk a little bit more about, um, we have four key components. So we have wellness clinics that are in vulnerable population uh settings, three of them of our eleven uh here in the city of Berry. We have these wellness clinics also in social housing, twenty-three across the region, which includes ten here again in the city of Berry. We have a referral program to put other types of services and supports to avoid those or prevent those subsequent nine-nine, nine-one-one uh emergency response calls. Uh, we saw over twelve or approximately twelve hundred of those referrals last year, again, close to, I think, two hundred and eighty-seven for residents here in the city of Berry. Um, and last but certainly not least is our home visit program. Uh, and we're up to over eight hundred uh patients across the communities across the region. Again, we have a hundred and fifty-two patients that are here in the city of Berry. Um, and before I leave this topic, um, I'm going to tag on to And before I leave this topic, I'm going to tag on to the conversation from your police chief about this new care pilot. It's a great partnership with the city of Berry. We're working with the Berry Police, we're working with the Community Mental Health Association, and we launched this new care pilot October fourteenth. So as your police chief mentioned, it's a care team of two individuals. So one of the staff is from the community mental health, and the other is a specially-trained community paramedic. And this response unit, since this launch, October fourteenth, we've seen seventy-two different clients in the city of Berry. And of those, we've had a hundred-and-thirty-six responses. So just to give you an idea, this is over a very short window, only three months into a three-year pilot program. So of those hundred-and-thirty-six, we have not had to call in an ambulance because of this response team for a hundred-and-thirty-two of those a hundred-and-thirty-six calls. And just to give you some sense of the scope of this, if we were to cost that, to quantify it, an average cost for a paramedic crew to arrive on ambulance and transfer to a hospital for a mental health, for a patient with mental health and addiction needs, it's approximately a hundred-and-ninety-one dollars per call. So with the hundred-and-thirty-two calls to date, it's approximately twenty-five thousand dollars if you were to quantify that, plus the additional resources that are now not being pulled in for these calls and can be available for emergency response. So if you continue to look at that, emergency department visits, of those hundred-and-thirty-six, a hundred-and-thirty did not require emergency department visits to our local regional health center. If you look at the Canadian Health Information Statistics, the average cost per emergency department visit is three-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. So three-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars times a hundred-and-thirty, if you do the math, it's approximately forty-one thousand. And then if you look at the amount of admissions that can result to a hospital, there's further savings, and that doesn't include the policing component of this. So as your police chief said, for those a hundred-and-thirty-six call responses, police did not need to respond to those particular calls because of the specialized unit. So it is early days, we're three months in, but it's very, very exciting. So we look forward to continuing to keep you updated on this. It has impact for policing, for paramedic services, for our local hospital, and most importantly, for the patients that we serve. Better services, we're getting the right people there to those calls. So we're very excited, we'll keep you posted. With that, we'll move into the operating budget highlights for long-term care. So year over year, we're seeing one-point-eight-five million or an increase of three-hundred-and-eight-thousand. And part of this cost sharing agreement is based on caseload or number of resident days. So we're seeing, we budgeted seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-two, which is on average twenty-two resident, residents during the year, which is an increase of approximately nine-hundred-and-fifty-five or three residents. And that's really based on a stabilization post-pandemic. We saw significant changes, and our calculations were based on bed days prior to the pandemic, so we've done a refresh. And as you may recall, the billing is actually based on actuals, so this is for budget purposes. Two areas that I'll quickly highlight for long-term care. This is a great news story. The Ministry of Long-Term Care during the pandemic initiated a direct care funding program for all long-term care homes across the province, and the goal in a four-year period was to achieve on average four hours of direct care per resident per day on average across all long-term care homes in the province. In 2024, they announced the final year funding. Our county council approved forty-seven-point-three additional full-time equivalents in our long-term care homes, which is roughly seventy, eighty new staff. Over the four-year period, we've been approved and are working to add a total of a hundred-and-twenty full-time equivalents. So great news, increased enhancements in the level of care in our long-term care homes. The flip side of this, however, in our budget is agency staff and costs. So you can see from the presentation, we've included an additional two million dollars towards agency staff, and I'm sure you're probably familiar with what's been happening in healthcare, not just long-term care in terms of agency utilization. We've seen a significant reduction in our agency utilization year over year. Our peak was two years ago. In 2024, we saw a reduction of approximately forty percent, and we've budgeted estimated another fifty-seven percent reduction in 2025. We are stabilizing, we are hiring new staff. However, it's a process that takes some time. So that is one of the primary highlights for the budget.
Sorry, I have to, excuse me, sorry. I just need to interrupt. I moved you ahead to give, because I thought it was going to be a ten-minute presentation as per the request. It's now seventeen minutes, which is basically the same as the two library presentations that'll happen next. So I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, and then we can go into questions, because it's just getting way beyond the scope of what we communicated.
Absolutely. So I'll leave you with this slide, and I'll turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Trevor Wilcox, to wrap up our presentation.
You have an unenviable position right now, Mr. Wilcox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'll wrap up with just a couple of slides. I'll just highlight that we have our operating costs highlighted, divided by all of the different areas. I did want to highlight that this is a regional system that we manage. We have allocations that we've got for the different services that we provide. Overall, year over year, it's a two-point-nine percent increase in operating costs, which we've kept in line through some increases in some areas, some increases in other areas. Capital is an area where there have been some significant increases related to a couple of the large projects that have been highlighted to you that are going on. With that, we'll take questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. Really appreciate that. I'll open it up to the floor for questions. Any questions on my right or left? Okay, Counselor Harris.
I'll be really quick, and maybe it'll help the library who's been patiently waiting. Just curious if under the community, I'm trying to go back to the slides. There's a lot of slides. The community services, I'll be quick. Does the investment in community services include a continuation of the effort to provide community navigators to libraries? I think there were several across the county. Is that included?
Yes, through you, Mayor Nettle. Yes, Counselor Harris, we increased the library investment, including increasing the budget for the Berry Library. The data points on that have been really good and really good outcomes, not only navigating those who are experiencing homelessness and utilizing the library, but also newcomers and different populations that are engaging libraries. And using that pilot, we actually expanded it across the county as well.
That's great, thank you. And just one quick comment. I was in the Aurelia housing build and had a tour in November, and it was a very impressive facility, so well done. Looking forward to what Berry will have when that is done.
Yep.
Thank you.
We have a question coming from Counselor Nagusi, who's not with us in person this evening, so I'm going to ask our clerk and deputy clerk. Counselor Nagusi, over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle. I should not miss this meeting in person, but I thought flew overnight, and I prefer not to risk my colleagues, so I stay home. Anyways, through to you, Mayor Nettle, to Mina. Just a quick question for the clarification on Slide Five. I'm just wondering if there was any research conducted to explain the significant changes, specifically to, you know, what factors contributed to Berry increase to fifty-one percent increase for Ontario Works? Are there new users for this program, or is this shift a result of residents relocating from Aurelia and other municipalities to Berry? What are the main reasons for this increase?
Through you, Mayor Nettle. Counselor Nagusi, the increase is point one, point five-one percent, less than one percent. So between Aurelia, the county, and the city of Berry, there's been very little change in the proportionality of caseload. The overall caseload in the county, we're anticipating, we saw in 2024, we were projecting around forty-five-hundred, and it nudged up. But what we're seeing across Ontario and what we're hearing from our counterparts, right, we budgeted for a seven-thousand caseload, going back to pre-pandemic numbers. So to answer your question in short, the overall increase is kind of distributed equally across the county, is what we're seeing right now, and we're predicting that we're going to be at pre-pandemic. This is, again, I remind you, a hundred percent funded, whether it's an increase of one person or seven-thousand people, it's fully flow-through from the province. But it is, we're anticipating slow, we've seen now year over year increase by about two-hundred-and-fifty, but we're anticipating kind of the final lingering impacts of pre-pandemic is going to hit, and you're going to see that number go up back to pre-pandemic numbers.
Thank you so much for the clarification. I thought it was fifty-one percent.
Oh, no.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, Counselor Nagusi, and we hope that you feel a bit better. I'm going to go to Counselor Corser, then Counselor Kangal.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Nettle. Thank you for Simcoe County for coming this evening and presenting, and I apologize to the library, I'll make this as quick as possible. But while you're here, I have to take the opportunity. Most people, you always say, like, don't ever wake up and look at your phone first thing in the morning. I look at my phone every single morning, and I go to the shelter utilization soon as I open up my eyes, and it's a great way to start the day, and I say that with great sarcasm. Just today, and the, like, we, Alston is at sixty-two-point-five percent capacity, Collingwood is at seventy-three-point-one, and Aurelia's at eighty-nine-point-seven. The city of Berry is continuously over a hundred percent. Today, sorry, because it's yesterday's numbers, it's a hundred-and-nineteen-point-seven. So let's round it up to a hundred-and-twenty percent capacity for shelters in the city of Berry. And I'm wondering for, how are we utilizing, so if Alston's at sixty-two-point-five percent, Berry is at twenty percent, then why aren't we moving people around? And what, is that not something that is done? Like, this is just such as, it seems to be unequal for different communities?
Through you, Mayor Nettle. Yes, we offer relocation to any open bed at any night through 211. The reason you're seeing kind of the numbers kind of shift is we did open the nineteen percent over a hundred, like the one-nineteen, is because we opened the two warming centers, so those spaces start getting counted, but they're temporary, so that's why they're showing over the hundred percent regular standing shelter capacity. In terms of the other three shelters, they're in what they call alternative space activation as well, which creates more space, but that's not counted. So we did catch that glitch as well, I checked this morning as well, and we contacted all three shelters. They were at full capacity last night, it's just their hyphes data didn't capture the alternative space activation number. So that's why it looked like it dipped down, but they were at full capacity. But we do offer internal transportation and offer to return when a bed opens up in your local community. And we also enhanced our motel voucher program throughout the winter season, and that's all now centralized, so it's operated through 211. They do kind of that diversion and appointment of motel vouchers to those who require it based on a set of questions to qualify them into the program.
Just a follow-up. Just a follow-up, if I may. So the hotel voucher system is not part of the capacity percentage?
Through you, Mayor Nettle. The base motel voucher program, which is for the families, is part of the base shelter system count, but in the winter, we activate additional motel vouchers for anyone who's outside, who cannot access a shelter, to come inside in inclement weather. So like currently, we're in inclement weather, we've activated, so if someone's outside and they can't bear the outside, and they can't access a shelter bed for whatever reason, including an accommodation reason, they can utilize motel voucher. That's a new feature we introduced in 2025, like 2425.
And that's the questions I wanted to ask, and I wanted to actually, while I have the moment, to thank you, because I owe you a thank you, it's long overdue. I have called you on a couple of occasions in an absolute panic, or emailed you in an absolute panic, and I am very thankful to you and your team for getting back to me quickly and closing some situations.
You're welcome.
Assisting some situations. I very, very much appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay, I have Counselor Kangal.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Thank you for presenting, Warden, Clerk, and members of the senior team. I know it's a lot to get through because you've got just complex and broad portfolios, and I thank you for bringing the context into the conversation around the numbers. My question is probably best directed to you initially, GM Faez-Baghet, or maybe Mr. Wilcox. The Row Street development, when we talk about the 2021 units, the community hub space and co-location of your offices, really strategic design from reducing your rental operating costs once you move in, how do you have an idea of revenue generation, or is there a target embedded that will kind of dictate what you want for square footage on more of the community hub side? Or will that really be a bit more of a lower, potentially square footage rate than we're seeing in marketplace to bring in other not-for-profits or community agencies? Sometimes we just get priced out in the system because it's expensive, right? So I didn't know if there was a known or to, future-to-be-identified revenue generation on rent for those spaces that are being designed in on the community hub side.
Through you, Mayor Nettle. Thank you for the question, Counselor Kangal. Based on the Aurelia build, which is a smaller-sized community hub space, we were able to broker agreements with the school board, ODSP most importantly. So the province is contributing not only to the setup costs, but also to the rental costs, so that is going to generate revenue at provincial square footage rates, which is a good thing, as well as childcare centers are going in, we have commercial space, we've created space for primary care, all in consideration of creating significant revenue streams that don't exist in community housing as it stands. In terms of community, we're still wanting it to be open to the community and the public in utilizing space for free. We do that at Aurelia, and also brokering healthcare services and clinical care services. So right now, we're running a twelve-hour-a-day clinic for unattached clients in Aurelia through the Ontario Health Team and through the Nurse Practitioner Association, coming out of soldiers. We're brokering and negotiating the same kind of level of service and designing more space for clinic beds, clinic rooms in the Berry build. So the short answer is yes, it's going to be mixed revenue. So revenue where we can get commercial rates, we will for commercial tenants, and for those who are community-based and delivering service to community, especially to residents and the surrounding community, they would probably get what we call like kind of our community-based rates that will even community. So this is the corporation renting to the county, Ontario Works offices and Children's Services office, you get the same rate.
Brilliant. Thank you for that. That was my main question. I've got no concerns with the budget. I see it as big system impact, right? So I think with St. Clair, GM St. Clair, you talked a bit about multi-budgets between various ministries that you're also managing, but also when we talk about direct care and long-term care, and that's been an ongoing provincial issue for years, if not decades, and quality of care and your ability to bring in funding, I think, and attract not only money to this region, but the paramedicine and the, I think, just being centers, I will call you a center of excellence for some of the care approaches. And we know right now, I mean, we're at multiple tables, and we're hearing this around surge capacity and crisis in hospital and other aspects, so anything that we're doing, in any way, shape, and form, no matter how one may view it as significant, has an impact, I think, around quality of care and improving individuals' lives. So it's amazing to see your strategy unfolding, I think, from, you know, when you presented your original, I think, within maybe the first month of taking on your job, this ten-point plan, and really since then, seeing it not only activated and doors being opened and people moving into better places and care delivery and that design, just actually coming at a really sophisticated approach in a very quick manner. I compliment the county through you, Warden, I'm hoping you can take that back. But you've been an amazing, for me, an amazing Berry partner. I know last term, having sat on county council on human services, the complexities of some of those and the dynamics of, you know, satisfying the needs of two urban large cities within sixty municipalities and
Thank you, councillor Kangal. We can go to councillor Rietma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just one quick question for Mina, actually. I know that, first of all, let me say that you've got a really tough job and you're doing a great job at it. We really appreciate it. And I know that the county applied for a homelessness and addiction reduction treatment facility, and I was just wondering where that stood.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, thank you, councillor Rietma. We have a great team. I'd be remiss not to say that, and there's a lot of people doing a lot of things very quickly to be able to deliver some of these services and these outcomes. The Heart Hub, the homelessness, addiction and recovery treatment hub, we did the application, we put it in on behalf of the city of Barry and the county of Simcoe. Any day is what we're hearing. We are attending Roma next week, so I'm sure there's going to be some more of us talking to each other and understanding where they're at. You know, we took a unique approach where we, as a service manager, had an opportunity to endorse others, but we chose to endorse only one application from the county itself since it's a health service provider, so qualifies to do so. And then we tried to build a coalition of every vested interest that delivers services for those experiencing homelessness with mental health and addiction needs. So it's a strong application. We are very proud of the process. You know, it started off with Mayor Nettle bringing everyone to the table, and that was very helpful to be able to coalesce like a lot of different groups and get them all kind of on board and focused on one goal. So I'm hoping for the best. I think it would be a significant investment and it would significantly improve housing outcomes for those who are chronically in need of additional supports and services that don't exist right now in the city of Barry.
Thank you.
Councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Nettle. I'll be quick, but I do want to also acknowledge the tremendous work, I think, that's taken place over this past year. Won't go into any more detail on that, but thank you, and I hope you do pass that back to your staff. Quickly, reserve utilization, so the early learning and childcare budget, I know there was a reserve transfer there to offset increases in community services, assuming that is just a short-term measure?
No, it's a nine-year strategy. So for the last five years, we've used it to not have any additional administrative cost impact on the city of Barry and the city of Aurelia and the county of Simcoe. We've reserved enough through the transition funding that we got when Seawalk was coming on board to expand that for four more years. So, and like I said, hopefully after four years, you'll see the $10 a day take effect, case loads for subsidized, fee subsidies come down, and then you'll see the administrative burden probably balance to an exact number, which will be helpful.
Okay, thank you. I was unclear on the timeline, so that helps. In terms of the paramedic service expansion, so just noting that the addition of eight paramedics, and just wondering what like data is used to support that, is that just based on population growth? I think there was eight paramedics and one new logistical coordinator, I believe, but just if you can give a bit more explanation in terms of how that's determined.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. There's a number of variables that we look at. So we look at historical data, call volume, we look at call volume by location and where resource utilization is. So of the additional eight FTEs for frontline paramedic services, we're adding a 12-hour ambulance in Bradford, West Gilmour to cover 24/7 currently. There's a 12-hour ambulance on days only, so to give that 24/7 coverage. And the other four full-time equivalents are being spread in the Northwest and in the Northeast districts to enhance our level of advanced care, paramedicine and specialized incident response unit response currently. They're just in the central region, which includes Barry and some of the neighboring municipalities, so we're trying to spread across the entire region.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And then just last question under, I think it was slide 21, capital projects. I know we didn't get into that. You said a lot of information to get through, but I've just made some notes when I went through it. The 9.7 million that's allocated to affordable housing in Barry, just wondering if you can comment a little bit in terms of how that money is prioritized to address some of the more urgent housing needs, whether it's family housing, homelessness, if you can expand a little bit?
So the 9 million is for community housing, and it's managed capital planning, so it's part of our capital long-term plan. We do building condition audits and unit inspections on a five-year basis on the building audit and then an annual unit inspection. That kind of starts to mark out our capital need for each building. And then what we do is we create a capital strategy for each building, and then we execute a certain portion as the life cycle of the product. So for example, there's a 30-year life cycle on kitchens. So you take a look at 30-year mark and see, can that kitchen survive or not? If it can't, then you do, you implement your strategy. Primarily speaking, 30% of that is going to the city of Barry for buildings in particular. One of them's giving a major kitchen replacement, so that's why it's on my mind. And that's the Blake Street Tower that's in South Simcoe there. And what we want to do, start investing in properties that we believe in a mixed income model can generate more revenue. So it's not only to keep the asset alive, but also to get it to create some more revenue for us so that it can cover exponentially growing costs like utilities and insurance on the aging buildings.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good to know for further questions.
Any other questions from members of council? Okay, I'm seeing none. I have a couple of questions, just wanted to follow up on. So the report that we had done, where we've done the audit, came back and said, look, 95% of the things that are governed by the county, you're receiving at level or higher than level, I guess, return on investment, for lack of a better description. And so want to start with, thank you for that, because I think that it took a lot of, a lot of work to try to figure out on the top level, the oversight of different things. There was a couple of recommendations that came out of that report, and I'm not sure necessarily who to ask the question to. One of them was the 10-year payback on the capital projects going to the life of the project. So if we can use Aurelia as an example, we were responsible for, I think it was 25%, correct me if I'm wrong, we're responsible for 25% of that build. That equated to a certain amount of money, we pay it back over 10 years, and the building is projected to be, what, a 35-year building, just the way that you build them? Is that, is that accurate? Am I speaking truth, or am I making things up?
Through you, Mayor. The capital payback, so the amount that you're charged for the capital is extended over 10 years. So we don't, we don't send you a bill in year one for the capital, we send you a bill over 10 years. It's up to you, how you finance it, whether you finance it over that 10 years and immediately pay it, or you finance it with any other debenture, whichever way you want. But it allowed some flexibility so it would smooth out those bumps over those first 10 years. That was the intent. We are going to look at that again. That was one of the recommendations, and that's something that we'll look at when we're looking at the shared services agreement and that renewal.
So I guess my question is, is the county then open to the extension of this? Because if you put the three projects together, right, the three major projects right now in Bradford, Aurelia and Barry, I think it was around 400 million in investment. And if I'm making up that number, please tell me, 350?
Sure.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, so 350. So our contribution on 350 would be 82.5 million or something like that, and I'm grasping for numbers here. But paid over 10 years, that's $8.25 million. Each year, we have to put into this reserve. And if you were to take it over, say, the lifespan of the asset, you could say that, okay, well, we believe it's going to be a 25-year asset. And again, recognizing the way you build is to endure, right? If that's the case, then all of a sudden, well, we have the ability to reduce it by, you know, call 100, a half or a half, maybe a third, two-thirds, so we're only paying a third of what we would today. Is that something the county is open to, or is that not something that you're open to?
It is something that we are going to be investigating. I've been directed by council, sorry through you, Mayor, to come back with a report reflecting the value for service audit, the results of that, and to give them background related to that. Then I'll give background related to the shared services agreement and get some direction on if that's an option that we can explore with staff.
Thank you. And the last, before I give a comment on, because there's some great questions about Mina's department, the last thing I will leave you with is this, that I'm struggling, and maybe this is too, you can report this in your report to council, where I'm struggling on the relationship now, it's gotten down to a very, you know, fine area. And the area is Ontario Works and that section, and then the children's and long-term care. And I'll explain the Ontario Works. You know, if somebody is in, call it the region, we're not in a regional governance environment, but just geographical region, needs help, let's say they go to the RVH. Right now, we know that that person walks out of the RVH and then they look for help. If they don't have family to go back to or somebody to get help from, they're going to the Busby Centre or one of our other services here to provide immediate help and then become a member of our community. But they might have originated in Ramera, they might have originated in, I don't know, Collingwood, they could have originated a whole bunch of different places around the county. But the moment that they are a resident of Barry, it's our calculation. And the moment that they're without a fixed address and looking for service from Barry, it's now Barry's cost. And I don't know that there is a way to get the answer on where the original place was that individual was coming from. But we, it's a, by default, Barry picks up the cost. And when I look at that and I go, okay, well, this is one of the areas where it's not a 25% contribution, we are based on the amount of service we actually received from the previous year, as I understand it. That becomes a difficulty for us, because the city of Barry is picking up the bill, and I think there's very few times that others are picking up the bill for the city of Barry's folks moving, moving out, because we have the most services available for folks who are hurt. The other two were identified inside the report. That wasn't identified inside the report, to be clear. That's just a thing I struggle with, trying to rationalize in my head. The other portions were the children's services and the long-term care, and I think that there's a fair bit of work to do on that front. And I want to be very, very clear, there's work to do on that front. And this, this budget's going to get approved and all that stuff, and we're going to debate it, and there'll be a number in the end, but those three things to me, plus the way we finance projects, are the issues that we need to iron out as part of the relationship that exists between the city and the county, recognizing it's not just us, it's also Aurelia, and you have a very difficult job keeping everybody happy, not just your own 60 municipalities, but also these two others that are kind of part of it and kind of not. So I don't envy your position again, Trevor, but, but, but the reality is, our job is to try to figure out how to pay for the costs that are rightfully the city of Barry and not pay for the costs that aren't. And so I'll leave that stuff there. The final thing I just wanted to say is councillor Corsor, you asked some questions here about the shelters, and councillor Rietma, you asked about the Heart Hub, and I know there was others who asked about these similar things, but those are the ones that stood out for me. Council or county, what is it called, the committee of a whole, yesterday approved an additional request to the provincial government for more funding for shelter space, more funding, not just for shelter space, but really for the wraparound services that we're talking about already in the Heart Hub. And when the province announced that, myself, and a couple of other mayors from Simcoe County, I think Mayor Gordon, some, maybe Aurelia was there, went down with the premier. And at the time that it was announced, it was a certain amount of dollars for the province. Since then, there's been a change in that scope to focus on the municipalities except for, I believe, and I'm going off memory here, but Toronto, Hamilton, London, Ottawa, York region, and there was one other region. No, it was, it wasn't Thunder Bay, but one of the other regions. And so what that's done is, it means there's actually more than double the funds that we expected for the leftover municipalities and county areas like Simcoe County and the city of Barry. So assuming we all do our jobs right, and then the people on the other side of that all do their jobs right, it's not just the Heart Hub funding, it's now this other whole, whole other set of funding that's available for us. And, you know, I'm confident in Mina and his team, like, I got to tell you, like, it's, I am very confident. And our conversations are ongoing to find a way to make it all work without affecting our neighborhoods in the city of Barry. But there's lots of good things that are coming to try to, try to meet the day. And I don't think you mentioned that tonight, Mina, right? Okay, good. So, so it's not just the Heart Hub, there's more. Okay. Would you like anything, to say anything at the end here, Warden?
Just wanted to thank you for the opportunity and apologize to your library for us being as long as we were.
No problem. Well, thank you so much, and I hope you all drive safe going home, and I'm sure you're staying for the library, so we'll invite the folks in the library down. Sorry about that. Welcome to council.
Thank you.
And they say save the best for last, and you get to be last, then last again, like you're doing this twice. So over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Nettle and members of council. I feel like I should have brought a book maybe up there. Austin and I are pleased to present the library's 2025 budget request. The library continues to address the evolving needs of our growing community, and while we are requesting a small increase this year, we are mindful of the importance of maintaining fiscal responsibility. This budget will allow us to sustain service levels and address some challenging items in our budget. Before we dive into the dollars and cents, I'd like to share some very brief highlights from last year, which will give you a clearer picture of the library's impact and growth. And let's hope I can figure this out. There we go. Okay. 2024 was another exciting year for the library. We were thrilled to welcome 12,000 new members for the second year in a row, bringing our total to nearly 25,000 over two years. We continued to build community with the Barry Dragon Boat Festival, and we're proud to be the recipients of various awards and recognitions. As our membership grows, so too does the use of our collections. We've seen a strong surge in the use of digital resources, including eBooks and digital audiobooks. We're excited to see that residents continue to use and value our various collections. Rapid growth in our membership is one of the most notable trends over the past year. Each month, we welcome around 1,000 new members, and the total number of active cardholders across the city has now reached over 46,000. More people are discovering how library membership enhances their quality of life, and we're excited to see this trend continue. Library programs also remain a popular and essential part of our service. Over the past year, we hosted over 2,700 programs with nearly 52,000 participants. Mentioned earlier tonight, one of the most impactful additions to the library this year was the Community Navigator pilot, which is funded by the county of Simcoe. We contracted this out to CFS Counseling and Well-being, and the Community Navigator has helped over 200 individuals facing complex challenges. We've seen a significant decrease in the number of serious incidents at the library, as well as the number of trespass notices issued at the downtown library. Having a Community Navigator in place has allowed library staff to focus on core library services and has provided invaluable support to our staff as well. The Community Navigator role has quickly become a key part of our downtown library's operations, and we're very pleased that the county has agreed to continue funding this initiative for 2025. As we plan for the future, there are several challenges that may have an impact on our services. The library is experiencing growth in membership, as I mentioned, as well as usage, and this growth- And this growth does increase the cost of doing business. With costs rising for materials and technology especially, we may not be able to sustain the drawn reserves going forward for annual increases in the long term. We're also in the course of ongoing negotiations. And while we will, of course, negotiate within our means, preparing this year's budget was especially challenging as these negotiations are just beginning for a new collective agreement. While some challenges persist, this is also a moment of tremendous opportunity for the library. We're on the cusp of launching a new strategic plan that will guide us over the next four years and position the library as a vital community hub for growth and innovation. We continue to see steady growth in self-generated revenue. While this represents a small portion of our overall revenue, these increases help support our general financial stability. The opportunities ahead are exciting, and with council's continued support, we can ensure the library remains a vital part of Berry's growth and success. I'll now turn it over to Austin to walk you through the details of the budget.
Thanks, Lauren. So Lauren has touched on some of the challenges and opportunities we're facing in 2025. I'm happy to now provide you with some details on our expected revenues and expenses. The 2025 budget reflects a careful balance between meeting rising community needs and managing costs. While the increases in salaries, materials, and the Community Navigator, excuse me, program address our growing population's demands, we've identified efficiencies in other areas, such as contracted services, to mitigate the overall budget increase. Expenses in 2025 total $10.8 million, representing 3.7% growth over last year. Now, I'll provide some details on the various lines. This year, we're projecting a 4% increase for salaries and benefits. The growth reflects anticipated cost of living increases as well as a 6% increase in the cost of benefits. Due to increased demand and rising costs from our vendors, investments in library materials and collections will increase by 3% in 2025. Contracted and other services includes courier, phone, IT systems, financial fees, consulting, training, and staff development. A smaller increase here represents higher fees from our vendors, offset by newfound efficiencies within our IT systems. The county-funded Community Navigator line sees a significant increase as this will be funded for a full 12 months in 2025. The COB Transfers Line shows funds expensed by City of Berry corporate facilities to maintain our spaces. Facilities determines this figure annually with input from library management. A 2% increase here aligns with inflationary increases of facility costs. So moving to revenue, while most of the library's revenue comes from the city of Berry, there are smaller amounts brought in from the province, the Township of Oremodonte, and fees for service. The library's projected revenue for 2025 reflects a blend of stable funding sources, modest growth, and reliance on internal reserves to balance the budget. Revenue from rental income and service fees shows a meaningful increase, reflecting our efforts to maximize self-generated revenue streams such as printing and room rentals. In 2025, we plan to draw $230,000 from our internal reserves. This ensures we can maintain our services while closely aligning with the targets of the mayor's budget direction. With increased expenses of 3.7% and an ask of only 1%, this underscores the need for stable funding long term because reserves are not a sustainable approach overall. As noted previously, we are pleased that the county of Simcoe has committed to the continuation of the Community Navigator program in 2025. This highlights the county's recognition of the library's growing role in serving the needs of people in our community who are facing complex challenges. The Township of Oremodonte contracts us to provide services for their residents. This year, the board negotiated a 3% increase on this contract. Grant funding remains relatively stable with a slight increase showcasing our continued success in securing competitive grants such as Bright Futures and funding for the naturally occurring retirement community research project. As always, the municipal funding remains the backbone of our revenue. While this year's marginal increase helps adjust inflationary pressures and minimizes tax increases, it highlights the challenge of keeping pace with service demands in a growing community. As a registered charity, the library does engage in fundraising to support initiatives outside the scope of regular operations. Fundraisers' dollars are never guaranteed, so we don't generally include an estimate as part of our budgeted revenue. However, we have provided an estimate tonight and can project net fundraising revenue of about $26,500. The bulk of this is raised through cafe sales at the downtown library as well as other initiatives like book sales that you've probably seen in the media. So despite rising costs, provincial contributions have remained flat for two decades. I'm sure that's something you'll remember us mentioning in previous years. Every year, support from the province in the, through the operating grant becomes a smaller proportion of the library's overall revenue. Active advocacy in this area does remain ongoing, though, and we're, we have regular conversations about this issue. So this slide goes through the several asks that came out of last year's budget discussions that library staff and the board worked through. This slide summarizes the asks and also the result to date and how they were resolved. But in the interest of time, I won't go through this one in detail, but you have it for your information. Council also asked the library to demonstrate improved financial governance and oversight related to the allocation of grants and use of library reserves through a financial controls and oversight policy. Approved by the board in November, this new policy outlines the library board's financial oversight and practices and ensures responsible management of resources in alignment with the Public Libraries Act. To safeguard the library's financial health, the board proposes maintaining two reserve funds, the Financial Stabilization Reserve and the General Reserve. Both reserves would require board approval for transfers and align with the library's commitment to building long-term capacity. Library management is currently working with city staff to ensure the implementation of this policy satisfies council's expectations to ensure oversight is in line with other service partners and that cooperation between the library board and city council can be maximized. Launching a new strategic plan and planning for library system expansion will certainly keep the library busy this year. It's an exciting time for the Berry Public Library, and we're proud of the progress we've made so far. Our team is committed to ensuring the library is well-positioned to grow sustainably and meet the needs of an expanding population. So we deeply appreciate council's ongoing support of the library, which allows us to help build a thriving community together. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you so much. And Lauren, while you didn't bring your book, I do have mine with me right now. Just want to point it out. That shocked a lot of people that I have a book. I I know. Questions for members of council? I'm going to start with Councilor Harris and then Councilor Kungel.
Yeah, thank you to you both. And congratulations, another successful year for the Berry Public Library. Just had a few questions, and and some of these questions relate to the excitement of the next presentation. And certainly, we've seen the benefit of adding smaller libraries as we did in Holly and and look forward to the discussion about Northwest. But with that line, I mean, I know fundraising, as noted, you know, modest projection with, you've mentioned the rising costs and all these things that are a part of the reality of the library. How only $39,000 and you only contribute $13,000 in fundraising costs? What does that fundraising cost include?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Councilor Harris. So the $13,000 that you noted, those are expenses related to fundraising. So largely expenses drawn to the cafe. So we're buying the snacks and the pop and the coffee and things that we're selling, then we're selling again in the cafe.
So does the cafe, what's the cost to run the cafe?
It's it's about that $13,000. There, I'd have to confer to be sure that that's just the cafe. There could be other expenses related to fundraising in there. But the cafe is run by volunteers. So those expenses are related to fundraising. That's what it costs to run the cafe.
Okay. Just, yeah, I'm just curious. I know, having been down that road with other places and cafes and getting out of the business because it wasn't, it has potential to make money, and it's not making money anyway. But I'll leave that there. Just curious, on the general fundraising, do you have a fundraiser, someone who does fundraising for the library?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Nettle, to Councilor Harris. Yes, we have somebody who does fundraising. She also is responsible for writing grants. So she brings in other funds outside of general fundraising, but she does all of our donor management. So the 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 estimate that we provided is not necessarily what we get every year. So sometimes we will receive a larger donation, and sometimes we will receive nothing. So it's it's really hard to predict in terms of fundraising what we're going to bring in because sometimes we will receive a request or things that we weren't expecting necessarily. But there is donor management and and things that the donors are expecting as part of that donation.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious about what's then, I was, and I understood the $13,000 in costs, but the, what is the all-in cost on in resource development fundraising as far as staffing and and?
Is it possible to get back to you with that answer? I don't want to guess.
Yeah, sure, yeah, because I know fundraising is the ROI, right? So the cost includes the people who actually do the fundraising. And if it's not a net, I began thinking about the value of having operating funds for the new library, hopefully in Northwest. But anyway, the other question was, does, do you have a breakdown of management and non-management staff? So and is there a ratio accord or like some industries, like 10% management? Is there a breakdown of how many are management versus non-management?
Yeah, I would have to say we're roughly about that 10%. We've got, we've got 12 on the management team, and there are some exempt as well. But the bulk of our staff are are unionized frontline, full-time, part-time staff.
Thank you. And maybe one last question. I I think it was a topic of discussion last year, but I don't see where the reserve is. Can you give us an idea of what the reserve's currently at?
Sure. So right now, we have, it's called a future capital expenditures reserve until we we're able to make those changes. And so it's currently sitting at 2.8 million. We were pretty successful in terms of interest earnings last year, so.
Okay, that's great. Is it fair that, like, given the modest fundraising year-over-year and the cost to fundraise, is it fair to say that the 2.8 million would have come from, as you mentioned, the city of Berry being being your biggest revenue source would have come from city Berry funds?
So some of those funds are from, you know, a general operating surplus that we may have had, you know, especially during the pandemic. And some of those funds are from fundraising. So I do have breakdowns for that, but I would have to get it to you at a later date.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, just based on the numbers, it feels like it was, and it's fine. It's just that ratio would be higher, higher on the city Berry side versus the fundraising side. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Harris. Councilor Kungel?
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Good evening, Austin and Lauren. Thank you for the presentation. Just one very quick question. I believe I know the answer, but I don't want to assume. The navigator rule, the year-over-year adjustment's gone up by 40. I'm assuming that's because the position is whole at 120, but that's an in-year hire. So you just didn't have a full year of HR resources or funding. But it's, you haven't gone up in capacity. It's still a one FTE or one full-time position that you're contracting with CFS. Okay.
Yes, yeah, through you, Mayor Nettle. So yes, so last year, the person wasn't in place until end of April, like 1st of May. So now we're just looking at a full 12 months of the service, but the cost of the service is the same as last year. And that is provided through CFS Counseling and Well-being. So the Community Navigator doesn't work for the library. She works for them, and and we contract out that service.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kungel. And I'm going to go to Councilor Harvey now, and then Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nettle, and thank you for your presentation. Just one piece of clarity, because obviously, being the Chair of Finance, I kind of look at this maybe a little bit differently. But I know the Community Navigator last year, and then you've indicated in your presentation this year, is being funded by the county. But by the documents that we've been provided, it appears that you've included that $120,000 in this year's ask. So I'm just kind of wondering, when you run the numbers, it seems that that $120,000 is built into the chart that you've provided on your slide deck and also in the paperwork that we have.
Yeah, so through you, Mayor Nettle. I don't know if we can get our slide back up. It is, so it is included in our expenses, and then it is included on the revenue side, but it's not in the municipal ask of the revenue. It's included in the, like, the grant funding section of revenue. If we can get our slides back up or not.
Okay, if that's the case, we don't need to pull up the slide. I I just wanted some clarity because it looked like it was built into into it, and we can take it offline if we.
It's included in the 3.7% increase of expenses, but not in the municipal revenue ask.
Okay, fair enough. And I just want to kind of expand a little bit on one of the questions that Councilor Harris has and or had. And I know we had the similar question last year. And it's really to do with the fundraising piece. Not, I'm not against fundraising. It's just that if somebody is making, let's say, $60,000, $70,000, whatever the case may be, as a fundraiser, whether it's us or whether it's you, you really need to sit back and analyze what is the true dollar value that that individual is bringing in to what the cost is. And it's not costing the library, it's costing the city of Berry taxpayers. And there's also a second individual noted off your website that has fundraising attached to their title. And that's where we, and it's not, I'm not being critical. I'm just saying, I think it's something that needs to be visited from yourself as the the CEO of the library because I'm not so sure that the taxpayers are getting value for their dollar for that type of an investment, especially when you're showing revenues that are, seem to be solely based off the cafeteria, and they're very small dollars in the grand scheme of things. And it would obviously be easier and probably more cost-effective to offset some of that revenue with the fairly healthy surplus that you're running. But again, just my my two cents, something that I think you need to to revisit. But I do appreciate everything that the library does. Although we do have lots of questions, you do have lots of support around this table, or else we wouldn't even be having this next presentation that's going to take place. So don't take it as being critical in that fashion. It's just, obviously, we have to look at everything from a taxpayer's lens and make sure that every dollar is being effectively used. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Councilor Harvey. I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Thanks for the presentation. And on slide 11, it's in regards to the policy aims to modify the library reserves. Can I just get a little bit of clarity on the reasoning behind that? I just, I notice it's, it's a little bit different from kind of the motion that was passed at council. So I was just wondering, like, I don't see that, I think the motion we passed at council, that the direction of any capital spending would have to be approved by council. By by accepting these two policies, that would actually null and void that motion of council. So just a little bit of clarity.
So yeah, through you, Mayor Nettle. So you're right, the motion had two pieces, to put in place a policy, and then basically to pause capital spending from the reserves with approval to come from council. So the way the Public Library Act works, we did some, had some meetings with city finance staff, and it's a bit unclear how that works. Like, the council shouldn't necessarily have to approve capital spending from the reserve. But that being said, we didn't, like, out of respect for council and respect for the relationship, we didn't spend anything out of the reserves since that time. And then when we put the policy into place, it works to improve that transparency and that communication between the board and council on how reserve funds are used. So to speak to the switch to the two reserves, the, just to get the name of them, the Financial Stabilization Reserve and the General Reserve, instead of just having that future capital expenditure reserve, the way we can then, it provides flexibility to the board to then use that money. So we can move, again, I don't want to get into too many details because we are still working with city finance staff to make sure this policy is still going to work. But having that financial stabilization piece will allow us to do stuff like we're doing this year. We're taking about $230,000 from reserves to fund our operations with the, again, to refer back to what Councilor Harris mentioned, some of that money, of course, is from surpluses. And like Lauren mentioned, surplus is from the pandemic. So we can take some of that money and re-reprioritize it and use it for operations to make that ask from the taxpayers lower. So it provides the board with that flexibility of how we use our reserves. And then also to refer back to what Councilor Harris was saying, we do have the opportunity in this new fi, in this new policy to present reserve details to council. So we can present kind of the long-term capital plan of those reserves. So here's what's in reserves. Here's what kind of the plan is to use them. Because we know we've had some some confusion in the past on what that money's for. So this allows us the flexibility to use it for operations where it makes sense, So this allows us the flexibility to use it for operations where it makes sense, as we've discussed with council in the past. And it allows us to, to present to you kind of what the purpose of that money is, whether it's new spaces like we'll talk about shortly, or updating spaces, that sort of thing. So that's the thinking behind the policy in general, and that switch to provide flexibility within the reserves. So hopefully that answers your question. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you for that. And through you, Mayor Nudel, as a follow-up. So using the example you give for like the $250,000 for this year's budget, do you believe that if you'd have come with that proposal to spend 250 from the reserves for the operating budget this year, you'd have trouble approving that by council?
I don't think I understand the question. Sir, I, through you, Mayor Nudel, I don't think I understand the question.
So, so if you, like, if we go on the motion that passed at council, the spending of your reserves would be, need to be approved by council? So if you'd have brought a motion to council that would have asked to use 250,000 for this year's budget, do you think that that wouldn't have passed at council?
Well, no. And I think part of, through you, Mayor Nudel, to Deputy Mayor Thompson, part of those discussions when we were drafting the policy and clarifying even from last year about the availability to use reserve fund for operations, it, at the time, we didn't think we could. I didn't even think it was an option, unless we had like a bylaw to move the purpose of the reserve funds. But through discussions with city finance staff, it was determined that we could repurpose reserve fund for operations through the regular budget process. So through the process of us presenting the budget, allocating the revenue as we have, that was another way to approve the use of reserve funds in that way. So that's why we've kind of done it, done our revenue that way this year.
Out of the 2.8, oh, sorry, through you, Mayor Nudel, and just as a follow-up, through the 2.8 million in your reserves today, what would your allocation be to each of these funds? So the new reserve and then the financial stability?
So, yeah, through you, Mayor Nudel, to Deputy Mayor Thompson. So the, the way the policy is written currently is that the Financial Stabilization Reserve would strive to maintain a minimum balance of 5% with a target balance of 8.3% of budgeted library expenses. So I thought 8.3% was kind of a random number, but that represents one month of expenses for the library board. So the point of that Financial Stabilization Reserve would that, is that it would hold one month of expenses. So I can't do the math right now in my head, but essentially, if those reserves got set up, we could move 8.3, we could, 8.3% of expenses into that stabilization reserve, and the rest would stay in that General Reserve for, again, future expansion and growth and that sort of thing.
Just, just as a number, because we've asked my numbers earlier, you're about 10 million. It's going to be 830,000 for the first, the finalization reserve.
A little, yeah, a little more because we're about 10.8. And it's up to that amount. It wouldn't necessarily be that amount, but yeah, yeah. And then the remaining of the reserve would be available. Again, we can present to council that, that long-term plan, but that, those, we'll, we'll also talk about it in the next presentation a little bit, those long-term plans.
Thanks. Any other questions for members of council? Okay, seeing none. And before we go into the next presentation, I just want to touch on the budget presentations for council. So we have a week before we'll deal with it at General Committee, and then the final ratification at City Council. I, I do want to take the opportunity to highlight, though, that, you know, the conversations that we've had with our service partners, two out of three have, I think, yielded the results that we were looking for last year. One of the things I think we all felt, whether it was, maybe not about all the same organizations, but we all felt in one way or another that the city was easy street, right? Like, it's like, okay, well, let's just go to the city because, you know, they've got a gazillion-dollar budget. And I think what we've witnessed from both the police and from the library is trying to find other ways to do it, trying to find other places to get the right resources in place. And I think that's a, a big, a big win, not just for us, but for those organizations. Like, they're digging in, trying to figure it out. And I just want to say, you know, police are gone, but I want to say thank you, because it does take a lot of effort. For the police's perspective, I forgot to mention this earlier, they, I think he gave us 1.45 million back within 12 months, something like that. You folks have been able to say, okay, we're going to go dig into reserve for, for this year on an operating deficit, and, and not just come back and say, oh, the city will pick up the tab, taxpayer will pick up the tab on a go-forward basis. So I think that's food for thought for the next week as we, as we look at it. And I recognize the, the third relationship that was here this evening is far more complex than either the police or the, or the library, who are essentially, you know, just, it's just us that they are accountable to, versus the county has many, 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 many stakeholders. So we'll go to the fourth presentation of the evening, and welcome back to the microphone. The floor is yours.
All right, hello again. So thank you for the opportunity to bring forward a business case for a Northwest library location. A library in this part of the city would bring much-needed library services and a public, public space to a currently underserved area. When planning for a new branch, we can build on the success and operational framework of our existing library locations, particularly the Holly Community Library that has been operational for the last two years. So to remind everyone, in December, council's Finance and Responsible Governance Committee asked the board to prepare a business case for a new location in the Northwest. With only a few weeks to prepare, we were able to provide estimates for the operating and capital costs for a small boutique library in this neighborhood. So the library board was able to consider the potential for expansion at a special board meeting last week. The board provided direction to the CEO to make an initial ask for funds to facilitate planning, as well as to move forward with information gathering and preliminary planning for this location if funds are secured. Lauren and her team are prepared to work with the city's corporate facilities team, as appropriate, on this exciting opportunity should council decide to move forward. A Northwest library location is supported in the 2019 Library Master Facilities Plan. That plan, written collaboratively with the City of Berry and approved by council and the board, speaks to the need for a six-branch library system to support the community, including expanding service into underserved areas. The plan recommends meeting the provincial guideline of 0.7 square feet of public library space per capita. Our current, our current service coverage is sitting at 0.38. This figure will stray further from the target as the city continues to grow. We are looking forward to the addition of the planned recreation center libraries in the South End. You can see the, the planned six-branch system on the slide there. So we're looking forward to the addition of those recreation center libraries in the South End. However, we appreciate that the timeline for these has continued to be pushed out by several years. In the meantime, we are pleased to have received direction from you to explore opportunities to support residents in this neighborhood. As this is an established area, it is recommended that a branch be placed in a commercial leased facility, as we have done with Holly. This allow, this also allows us to accelerate the timeline to open a new facility. Library staff are beginning to develop a community profile for Ward 5 neighborhoods. This area is home to over 26,000 residents, with 5,000 of those being children and youth, and this catchment serves 12 local public and private schools. A location that is walkable to schools would be considered ideal to support children and youth after school. I'll pass it over to Lauren.
As this is an underserved neighborhood, we are already supporting residents as much as we can through library outreach. For example, in 2024, we used our Bright Futures grant funding to support a program for at-risk youth at Lantman Lane Community Center. We have also seen a positive public response to weekly summer storytimes at Lantman Lane Park, as well as participation at the local community garden and interactions with children in local schools. While these efforts are a step in the right direction, they do not provide residents with all the benefits that a physical library location would, a space for literacy, leisure, and learning. Due to its poor proximity to other library locations, this largely residential area has a population underrepresented in library memberships. Only 21% of residents in this area are currently using the library. A library in this neighborhood would contribute to council's goal to create a thriving community by creating space for literacy support, programming to combat social isolation, access to computers and Wi-Fi, access to learning and leisure materials, and community space that is accessible for work, study, and community building. It has been really rewarding to see the Holly Community Library embrace their library. It has quickly become a gathering space for all ages, with family and adult programming consistently growing in attendance. We've seen teens dropping in to meet up after school, adults engaging in various hobby groups, and families spending their weekends at the library. It truly has helped to create a thriving community, and we would be thrilled to see the same result in Northwest Berry. Over the last few weeks, we've prepared some preliminary estimates on both capital and operating costs based on our experience with the Holly Library. More concrete numbers can be provided once we have a better sense of community needs and have secured a location. Assuming service levels remain consistent with the Holly location, we can estimate an annual operating cost of approximately $957,000. This is based on an estimate of Holly operating costs that we carried out for the city's Value for Money audit, with a few tweaks based on lessons learned from Holly. While these costs are estimates, we are happy to return to council in the coming months with more exact figures. Again, using our experience at Holly and adjusting for inflation, we estimate capital costs to install shelving, furniture, IT systems, computers, and the collection around $890,000. We're not able to estimate the cost of leasehold improvements at this time until a suitable space is found. However, to give you an idea, renovating the Holly space came in around $650,000, with some of this paid in a lump sum and some built into the cost of the lease. The board will need to discuss and approve expenditures from library reserves, but I will say the reserves are generally in place to enhance and expand library services. A portion of the capital required for this location could come from these funds. In terms of next steps, tonight we're requesting an additional budget allocation of $75,000 to fund a detailed demographic analysis, conduct community consultations, and procure design and layout services for this potential new library location. This analysis will help us understand more about who's living here, their key service needs and preferences. These consultations will inform the design phase, ensuring that the new facility meets the evolving needs of the community. We've already spoken to city corporate facilities, and I'll continue to collaborate closely with them to ensure the project aligns with council's direction. Your support of this initial funding would be a critical step in making this project a reality. We appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight about a Northwest library, because public libraries promote literacy, help combat social isolation, and provide equitable access to resources that improve the quality of life of residents. Every dollar invested in public libraries generates significant direct economic benefits back to the community. We're confident that adding a library location in Northwest Berry would give a significant boost to residents in this community. It would also align closely with council's strategic goals, as well as bring the Berry Public Library closer to recommendations in our Joint Master Facilities Plan. We're prepared to return with more detailed financial and service plans for this location at council's direction. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
I thank you so much for the presentation. I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Perfect. Thank you. Through you, Mayor Nudel, and thanks for the presentation, and thanks for turning this around. I understand that these are supplementary numbers and stuff. By next week, would we be able to get a breakdown of the annual operating costs? Like, I see the bulk number, and just from your previous presentation, I work it out, it's between 60 and 62% of your budget is normally salaries. Does that sound about right?
That sounds about right.
So the operating cost of salaries at the Holly is about 650, let's say, give or take?
So through you, Mayor Nudel, to Deputy Mayor Thompson. So I believe it was Friday, I did provide a breakdown in operating costs to Mayor Nudel. So Mayor Nudel, feel free to share that with other members of council. And if you, if you have questions on those numbers, so that's already done. I will say, though, that these are estimates.
Yeah, yeah.
It was three weeks ago, so.
No, no, and that's, and I fully understand it. It's basically, we're, here's a 30,000 feet. Do you think it's doable? And then we're going to move forward. Correct me if I'm wrong, though, when we opened the Holly, you were able to reallocate staffing, correct? So it was already staff that were on payroll?
Yes, through you, Mayor Nudel. Yes, we were able to do that. I don't think I can do it again. We're at capacity in terms of staffing, and, and like we shared during our budget presentation, we are only getting busier, right? So the staff that I have, they are at capacity right now, and sometimes even overcapacity. So expecting them to do more by adding another facility, I just don't think we can do it.
And how many employees would that be, roughly, ballpark?
Overall, we have about 100.
No, no, at the Holly branch.
Oh, um, six? I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to get back to you on the exact numbers. We have a lot of part-timers, so I'd have to.
And I'm just looking at it like, in a, you know, kind of a different lens and stuff. Like I said, like, I was the one that brought this on, so I understand there's a cost. We're asking, you know, in a certain area where, you know, there's a construction to a building. It's not like Holly, like, I understand costs are going to be different, but I'm looking at it like, like, in the reality, you had six overstaffed, if you were able to allocate them to another location. And that's, you know, and that's where I think some of the conversation, and I will say, I appreciate the direction you're taking and looking at it, like, you know, we're not being hard on the library. We, you know, we answer questions. We're the stewards of people's money, right? So, and I appreciate everything you guys have done, moving forward with some transparency. But another question with the $75,000. So the demographics and stuff, like, wouldn't you believe you've already done that? Like, I understand the design. It's, like, I can get around giving you 25,000, you know, to get a design done, but the community consultant and all that stuff, I think you guys have already done that just by your own data. And I believe staff would be able to, through census, through our planning, and, like, we were getting Watson reports today that, you know, we're getting populations and stuff. So I'm just wondering if we could collaborate with staff and some of the data we already have to minimize that. Like, I understand, I know you guys aren't designers, and, you know, to look at it in that sense. But is that something, like, or do you, do you feel that the need to do all three of these?
Through you, Mayor Nudel, to Deputy Mayor Thompson. So while I do, I do feel like there is a bit of a sense of urgency to some of this, but I don't want to, I don't want to open a location that we're going to find isn't the right, isn't the right thing, that we didn't put the right things in, that we, that we were hasty in making our decisions. So I do want to make sure that we do our proper due diligence in terms of speaking to the community and finding out what they're looking for, what their needs are. And to do that quickly, we would need to hire some of that out.
My last question, this is maybe to staff, and I don't know if it would be through, it's through you to Mr. Pews or? I understand that it's preliminary talks in, with the landlord and costing and all that stuff. I would hate to spend $75,000 if there was never an opportunity. So are talks ongoing? Are they moving in the right direction? I know it's kind of hard because, but I just don't want to spend $75,000 and we realize there was no opportunity in this location, like, on the lease side of it.
Through your worship to members of council, we have been in discussion with the property manager for the specific property that was mentioned. My understanding is that we're actually looking at a broader, so there is one property that is available. There could be other properties in the area that would be just suitable, or perhaps more suitable. I don't know. I don't want to get into business confidential information, you know, in a public forum like this.
I'm just trying to think, and obviously, we can't do this publicly, but until we make a decision, would we be able to get that confidential of what other areas you were looking at? It's just, I represent the area, and I just, I think.
Can I, can I just recommend, we, first of all, there's, there's obviously some confidentiality related to this. It doesn't need to be answered this evening.
Right.
Because we're going to council next week, or, just, sorry, General Committee next week, and then council the following week. So what I recommend is, I want the two of you, and anyone else who wants to be in the conversation, speak offline this week, and then, and then come back. And we aren't making a decision. The request is, we made a request, now there's a request coming back saying, okay, we'd like to do what you want, but we want 75K to do some studies to make sure what you want is going to be implemented properly. And then we make that decision, not tonight, right? So I think if there's questions directly related to the library, let's focus on those and then go to the rest this, this week.
Perfect. Well, I'm excited for all the data, and I appreciate it, the, the stuff you were able to put, like I said, in such a short time. So I look forward to having those conversations. Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to go to Counselor Reema.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, yeah, I think this is an exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, yeah, I think this is an exciting little project, and I'd be really interested in seeing it come to fruition. My question to you is this, how does this compare to the Holly one that we did a couple of years ago? I'm thinking, excuse me, in terms of what do you see as maybe the size, what do you see as maybe the community you're serving? And I picked up from you that you said some lessons learned, so I'm just wondering if there's going to be some differences here.
For sure. So through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Council Rima. So, yeah, one of those things is, once we built Holly, we realized we need more space for programming. There's no, like, if you've ever been inside the Holly Library when a program, children's program especially, is going on, it is packed in there. And so I think if we were to do this again, another 4,500-square-foot facility, we would put fewer shelves and leave more space open so that we have more flexibility that way. Patrons can always request holds on items from anywhere in the system, so having the books actually physically in the building is great for browsing, but it's not everything, right? So I think that that's one of the big things, is we wouldn't buy as many books for our new location, there's just too many.
Just following up, do you think that you need more or less the same size of facility, or do you need something bigger or smaller?
Well, my honest answer is, we always need something bigger. The master facilities plan shows a 15,000-square-foot location for the Northwest, as it did in Holly. But the thing is, is in that, in those types of neighborhoods, there's nowhere to build a 15,000-square-foot building. So to fill in those gaps, we need to be a little bit more creative and find a spot that is available and provide that service in the best way that we can. So 4,500 square feet is very small, and that's why we call it a boutique library, because it's not everything, it doesn't represent everything that you would get downtown or even at Paineswick, because there's just not the space. So everything is sort of miniaturized, smaller meeting rooms, smaller collection. The programs are the one thing that is not smaller, they are just as big as Paineswick, and we shove them in. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rima. I'm going to go to Council Harvey, then Council Morales, then Council Harris. The South End Trio.
Great, thank you, Mayor Nuttall, and thank you for your presentation. I, too, share some of Deputy Mayor's comments and concerns, because I look back at how Holly became Holly. I don't recall us doing any type of demographic analysis or any type of community consultation, because I think, well, I think both of us were pretty confident that we knew this was gonna, was gonna work. And I can tell you from my comments that I've had from residents, I haven't had one complaint about the place. So I'm not really concerned that Holly was too small, it's serving the needs of the community. And correct me if I'm wrong, like, when it comes to the, you spoke about the shelving. Now, obviously, there's some kind of funky contours along the wall that obviously take a little bit of square footage away, but the main stuff that's in the middle, they're all on wheels and movable, so that way you can basically open it to one big square room, correct?
Yes, through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Council Harvey, in theory, yes, they are on wheels, but they're very heavy. So we don't like to ask the staff to move them that often, they will push one of them away for our storytime program or children's program, but we don't like to move them too often, especially because the more times you move them, the more likely they are to have damage to the shelf. So, yes, they are movable, but not easily. And you asked me something else. The consultation, so we did do the consultation for Holly, but we had a lot more time. So we did it in-house, using our own staff, we spent a full summer out at the Berry Fire hot summer nights, asking people to answer survey questions with iPads, and we had our outreach team out there, and we did a lot of that kind of community consultation, but we did it on our own, we didn't hire anybody to help us. So the reason behind looking for somebody to help us this time is just to kind of move things along a little bit faster than we would do on our own. As well as the demographic analysis, at the time that we built Holly, we had a subscription to Enveronics, and now we don't, because it's too expensive. So what we're looking at now is, we have a library resource called Simply Analytics that is a public resource available, like, it's a resource available to the public, generally used by the business community and others, but we are looking at adding a couple additional modules to Simply Analytics so that we can get some of the Enveronics data, like, the Prism data that looks at the types of people that are living in a specific neighborhood and kind of gives them a little bit of a, categorizes people, I guess, in some ways, to show you what you're looking for, as well as another module that looks at the daytime population count. So what are people doing during the day? Are they home, are they at work? Giving you a little bit more data so that we can plan programming and know if people are going to be able to come and who those people are. And the great thing about that is that those modules would also be available to the public. So not only would they help us with this project, but they would be a general public resource that the business community can, as well as yourselves. I know, I'm sure you've all seen the Prism data when we did have Enveronics, it's very useful, and we just can't afford that full, that full tool.
Thank you for that. I'm not going to make any promises to you tonight, but I may be able to solve the Enveronics piece of it for you. So stay tuned on that, behind the scenes. What type of, how would you expect the data to, like, be significantly different when you look at the makeup of Holly with a lot of young families, some people that are almost empty nesters, and then a mix of some seniors in there? And I'll be quite honest with you, as you go around the city, most of our residential areas pretty much have that similar makeup, so I'm just really struggling as to the value of wanting that, and also the time involved, because I guess my other concern would be, I don't even know where the location is, but I, from what I understand, there's a location that's being looked at right now, and the last thing you want to do is lose that spot, because we were doing all this other stuff. Because thankfully, we had some time to play with Holly, because the pandemic hit, which caused some further delays, so there wasn't that urgency that somebody was wanting that prime location that we had our eyes on, whereas I don't know that we're in that same position now, so that would be my concern on that piece of it. And also, too, when you had slide up eight, and I wouldn't even want to try to regurgitate everything that you said, you pretty much hit a home run with identifying all the key factors that anybody around this table or the public would want to hear as to justification for a library anywhere in this city, let alone, and that's why I say, I just, I'm really struggling to understand the need for this. And as I reiterate, Deputy Mayor Thompson, I know you guys, I don't even know who covered the layout, because I know there was no layout costs for Holly, but I really have no problem with the $25,000 for the layout piece of it, but I do struggle with the, with the additional stuff. And I think, when you look at Holly, you hit a home run. So if you've already got that roadmap, why do you want to change the roadmap? I don't know, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking, like, and also, too, I'm obviously looking at time and money when it comes to that type of stuff, but thank you again for, oh, actually, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if that was a question, Council Harvey, but through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Council Harvey, just to address a couple of things. One thing about, like, the statistics of the neighborhood, we did hit on, in our presentation, some of the, what we know so far, but the board did get a report with some of the, kind of, the initial stats that management was able to put together with the resources we do have, and there are some, you can't just say this location is the exact same as this location, because, I don't want to quote any of the stats, because I don't have them off the top of my head, but there are certain ones that were, like, this factor is 18% lower than the average for the city of Berry, like, that, like, whether it's income or graduate rates, like, those sorts of stats that we do have the information for. So there are things that vary a fair bit around neighborhoods of the city, so that is good information to build on, like, what we, the information we do already have. And the one other thing I wanted to mention about location is, the board was concerned about rushing into a potential opportunity without doing the due diligence, right? So we want to make sure we do our homework and have that planning in place to make sure it's going to work. So that was one thing that the board was just kind of stressing. So just two things about, like, the planning costs and kind of why we were thinking those were important, I just wanted to just address that quickly.
Yeah, no, thank you, I appreciate the concerns, but I think, like, the board may have some concerns, but when you look at who's funding this, it's the taxpayers. And when the holders of the taxpayers' money around the table seem to have full support of you moving full steam ahead, that's where I really struggle as to why we need to slow things down. We're not, we're not talking about building a huge library, like, the downtown with a $30, $40 million capital expense and that, that such forth. So, but I do appreciate everything that you've said, and, like, even when it comes to the dollar value of average incomes, that is readily available, too. All you have to do is go onto Realtor.ca and start clicking on the different neighborhoods, and that data's already incorporated into that, so there is other ways to be able to achieve some of what you want, but I'll leave my comments at that, so thank you.
I have Council Morales next. Now, Council Morales, there's 11 minutes before I need an extension. Do you do the extension now?
Yeah, I was going to say, am I supposed to do it now?
Or are you coming in in four minutes?
No pressure to answer the way I want you to, okay? You're going to get through bylaws, announcements, greetings, yeah, we might as well do the, might as well greetings, you know what I mean, sir.
Have we done this before?
Yeah. Oh, this term?
Not this term.
We can do it, we can finish in 11 minutes.
Okay.
Counselor, if you could do a motion to extend, please.
Well, we don't, just to extend it, doesn't mean we need to use it, right?
Before we started tonight, I wasn't losing hair and it wasn't going gray, I just want to point that out, the last four hours. So I need, I need a, I need a motion to extend.
Motion to extend.
I think I need that in writing, do I not? No, perfect. Do I need a seconder? Okay, we got, see? We got, the trifecta's sticking together here, so they can ask more questions. So it's moved by Council Morales, it's seconded by Council Harris, that we extend past 11:00 PM. All those in favor? It carries unanimously with reluctance.
Nope, not Robert.
Not unanimously.
That's his thing.
One holdout.
That's his thing, it's a, thank you, Mayor Nuttall, I'll go quick, thank you to the people presenting. I'm excited for the possibility of there being Northwest, it's, it makes sense, it's overdue. I've gotten a little bit more experience with working with the folks at the Berry Sports Hall of Fame. Concentrating your resources, your efforts, it makes sense sometimes, but a hub and spoke model is more successful, specifically with technology. And again, I've made the comments before, these people are of a different generation than me, and they get technology, they get bringing, in their case, the sports history to people through screens, or in addition, augmenting traditional canvases, et cetera, and the library's doing that with this. Where I'm going with this is, I'm supportive of that, but I think you're overhoused downtown. And I understand that, that energy and the tension and all that, but it's a build, it's a very large building, and there're starting to be pieces moving downtown, with post-secondary institutions, our existing one, incoming one's moving there. That building, and again, that's, not making any statement, but that is a very large, useful building for those things. That said, it's not about getting rid of that, it's about, it's about just breaking it off and redistributing into our communities. So, again, I'm not picking locations, but if that building were not to be there, and there was something closer to where the sandbox is, or downtown facing people, there could even be more opportunities and more, and more of a business case, of a needs case, to even create more need in northeast Berry, specifically around the Eastview Arena, Grove Area, and possibly even something augmenting Ward Three around the Community Rec Center. So why I'm bringing this up, you're talking about Northwest, but this is not offside, this is about, is it time to look at the efficiency of allocation of capital slash resources, and seeing if you can get into more communities than just Northwest by revisiting your downtown branch? And if not, what's the case for not?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Council Morales, it's 11, no, I'm sorry. I don't know.
You want to grow, you got to answer.
So I do appreciate what you're saying about the downtown library. I will say, though, it's not something I have seen done before. Most communities have a large central reference library where they are able to house those larger collections, so like I said, with Holly is, we don't necessarily, and would be the case in the Northwest, is we don't have a lot of space to keep the books. And so we do rely on the downtown library as a place where we can house a large portion of that collection and draw on that and use our courier system to move items through the system. And so we do need that space, not only just for the collection, but also for larger programs. I mean, when we host events on March break and the winter holiday break, we are seeing hundreds of attendees, like, you couldn't fit that into a smaller location. And so we do, we do need that facility or something of the same size for those larger, those larger events and those larger collections.
Thank you for that. Here's the thing about the evolution of that, libraries are no longer reference catalogs where you go, they're no longer that archaic, they, some people, and not in this discussion, not on this table, some people say libraries aren't necessary in a technology world, that things are on screens, that they're more augmented virtual reality, et cetera, so it might follow to that, and it's a really good point, though, libraries are becoming community hubs, that's where we're going to put them in rec centers, that's why we're putting them in plazas. So the more, if you move towards a model with more spokes and less focus on the hub, you reach more communities, you have more community hubs. I look at the city of Guelph, and they've been going through, this is not Berry, but they've been going through a nightmare the last eight years with what turned into the definition of a white elephant. Now, that was a new build, I'm talking about an existing build here. The one comparison I want to make is the fact that costs ballooned, that's just on the construction, it was canceled at one point, the feds brought back money, it became a political fiasco. I just picture that you have, I think that you have an opportunity, without numbers or doing analysis, of taking centralized resources that aren't reaching as many community members as many. They are being, they're effective, but they could be more effective, and reallocating them in the specific corners, Ward One, Ward Three of the city, to reach a more captive audience, and even by realloc, by just moving from what I call north downtown Berry to closer towards the water, you might even actually activate and improve safety and engagement in an area that desperately needs it.
Those are good points, and through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Council Morales, one thing I just wanted to add to Lauren's comments is, the board appreciates modernizing, being flexible, growing, and we, we've been thrilled with the success of Holly, as we've said numerous times, and that was something that a term ago or two terms ago would have been pretty unheard of, doing that boutique branch, and we're thrilled with the way we pivoted and the way that succeeded. But I did just want to say that, like, the downtown branch is very important to the board, and we are, in terms of modernizing and not being stale, we are, there's a lot going on downtown, as we all know, there's towers, several towers going up. So we know the population that the downtown library serves is evolving, so management and the board is actively looking at what we do downtown, how it's laid out, what's in the building, and how that could possibly be updated, evolved, so it is something that we are looking at, but that space is very important to the library board in general, but we see your comments about modernizing and making sure we're providing the best services we can.
And I say this question, my last question, with complete respect, is some of that concern why it's important, and it's, the library's important, it can be reprogrammed, because it has two floors, it has an elevator and lots of capital costs, is a lot of that concern objective on the delivery and its effectiveness, or do you think... Or do you think some of that is both emotional, both attachment, and the fear of the unknown? The fear of if, if theoretically the board and everybody said, yes, let's do this, let's break, let's, let's move out of the building, let's, let's augment into Ward One, Ward Three downtown, uh, that doesn't happen overnight. This isn't SimCity. So you essentially have to build out the new ones while shutting down operations. That's a staff issue, uh, relocation, uh, that's just a lot of change. Change isn't fun, change is scary. I'm wondering how much of it is purely objective on service delivery and how much it, it is the fear of nobody wants to be at the table that maybe sees, uh, something that's been around since 1994 go away.
Okay, I've given a lot of, um, rope here. Sorry, sorry, Austin. I've given a lot of rope here on, uh, what I considered to be allowable based on the conversation we're having, the presentation we've had. The presentation with regards to the operations of the library, I think, should have been dealt with at the presentation regarding the budget and operations of the library. This presentation's about a Northwest branch of Let It Go. Austin, you can answer, but I'm not taking any more questions on the downtown branch at this point. That doesn't mean that we can't have you come back to committee and answer these exact same questions. Okay? So.
I, I'm not sure if Lauren has a comment for this, but through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counsel Morales, the only thing I wanted to mention was, um, there's a lot of library supporters behind me that work with the library and every interaction I've had with them, they're not afraid of the unknown. They're very ambitious people, they're, they jump into change, they dump, jump into new challenges. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that any of them are afraid of change. So I wouldn't think that's too, too much of it, but that's all I wanted to say about that. I don't know if Lauren has a quick answer or not.
Yeah, just quickly, if we were going to go down a road of, of changing our service model, um, I would want to very carefully consider that. Like, we did a master facilities plan jointly with the city in 2017. I would want to revisit that again, go through that whole process and start over and, and look at that, if that's, if that's what, um, what we end up with, yeah.
Counsel Morales? Any, any other questions other than downtown? Okay, perfect. So Counselor Harris.
Yeah, thank you, man. I'll be quick through you. And thank you again. Excitement for the idea of a Northwest library, I think, a served, underserved community, no, no doubt. Uh, you had me at community profile, 26,000 residents, 5,000 ages, zero, zero to 19, 12 public schools, uh, private schools and average income, 9% lower than the city of Berry average. I think that exactly is why there should be a library there. I think communities that needs, uh, we talked about the Brighter Futures Fund and you, I think, received funding for there. We talk about meaningful activities for young people. And I believe in the library and I think the library would be, would be a great addition to Ward Five. So I, I've had conversations over coffee with, as a Berry kid, speaking to, um, Deputy Mayor Thompson. I think this is a great idea. So I'm all in, you had me at 217, the master facilities plan, recommended this, so it's eight years ago. So I don't think we're rushing. Eight years ago, this was identified as a need. So, um, thank you for your, uh, willingness to be, do your due diligence. I think demographic analysis, I think there's, we have offers maybe through, uh, Counsel Harvey to get some demographics. I think in the data consortium for the county of Simcoe might have some things you could get for free. Um, but I also think that, um, I, I, I'm happy to offer Deputy Mayor Thompson to do Ward Five town halls with residents to talk about the library. Uh, I think the Lampman Lane Community Center is a great place to do that. I think the school there is a great place, Andrew Hunter. So I think you will be able to get the community for a, a song because I think it's a great investment. Uh, like we did, uh, very quickly with the, um, South Shore discussion about the field. We, uh, staff, credit to staff, opened up a consultation. It was fabulous. The attendance was incredible because it was an important issue. I think this is really important, so keep going forward. Uh, great idea, Deputy Mayor Thompson. And I think this would be a wonderful addition to a community that really needs something. I've been there, uh, on the community service side, having discussions about helping the neighborhood and creating something meaningful. And this would be a great addition. And I do agree with the programming space, makes perfect sense. I think that's a great addition and recognition from what you've learned from Holly. So take that forward and make that great programming space to give that community something it really needs. So, thank you.
Too bad, we're not ending it there. Unfortunately, that's not where it ends. Okay, I have a question. Um, certainly we could bring the presentation back up. The, uh, right there. 2024 Bright Futures grant spending included session targeted to lower income youth at this catchment area. How many of those did you do around the city?
Um, we did two. So one was in the Lampman Lane area and the other one was in Allendale.
Why did you choose there?
Because we know that those are high need areas.
Okay. And how many different places in this high need area is there to put a, a library?
Good question. Not very many.
I'll, I'll answer for you. Unless the school board's giving us land or we shut down Lampman Lane, one. And so my message is, is not to you, Lauren. I, 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 I know it sounds a little bit facetious and I'm not trying to be mean, but the message needs to be heard by your board. There's a reason that that work was being done at Lampman Lane. There's a reason you got funding to do that work at Lampman Lane. There's a reason that the ward counselor came forth and said, we need to do something at Lampman Lane in LaTisha Heights. And it's all about access to services for young people who do not have the same access as somebody who lives downtown, somebody who lives in southeast Berry, someone who lives in southwest Berry. And I can tell you, it's very close to my heart, I know it's very close to everyone on this council's heart, that those areas of the city that do, that are lower, um, means get access. And, and we're not picking on the library here. Uh, you wouldn't believe how hard we were with the school boards when they came in. Counsel? We said, come back with a plan that allows us access to your schools and areas where we do not have recreation services, that we have low income areas. And so I don't want to sugarcoat anything on your presentation tonight, I think it's excellent. There's one thing I heard this evening that is, gives me like spidey sense if I was Spider-Man, which I'm not, um, is that there's a possibility of other areas. And if you go down to the Ops Center, for instance, at, uh, Edge Hill, you lose LaTisha Heights. And if you go over to, um, you know, Livingston, you lose LaTisha Heights. This is an area that has been identified by counsel after counsel after counsel that needs services. And it needs to give opportunity to young people that have been, quite frankly, left behind for far too long and 2017 said so in that report. Uh, so if there's something that comes back and says, you know, we're going to go over five kilometers the other way or three kilometers the other way, it's, it's, it's not going to get my support because I think we've, for far too long, left those young people behind in that area. So thank you for the presentation. I agree with everything was, was on there. And I, I've asked like five times, Counselor.
I, you saw me.
Okay, Counselor. So be the last one here.
Hi, through you, Mayor Nettle, to, um, Lauren. When you do a demo, a demographic analysis or a community consultation, do you look at the age and social economic of, of the neighborhood? Do you dig deeper than that? Like, for example, um, like if there was a facility in the area that needed, um, uh, like, um, it's late, can't even think anymore. Um, so if people had intellectual challenges, if there was an, a, an institution that was around there, if, if people spoke different languages, if, if there was a literacy challenges in the area, there's a lot, is there a lot more complexity to doing a, a deep dive than just the, the, the money, the, the money in the neighborhood?
Sure. So through you, Mayor Nettle, uh, to Counselor Corsair. So, so yes, I will say though, like in a, looking at a facility of this size, there's not, you're right, there's not like a lot that we can do differently than Holly because it is small. Like looking at a larger facility, there's so many other options of things that you could put in or not put in. Um, but in, in a facility this size, it's not necessarily about, um, the, the demographics are, making sure that the things that we do put in, the collections especially that we put in, are going to be of interest to, to the people living there. Um, but we also need that demographic information when we do our planning. So when we're planning for staff and our programming, we need to know, um, what types of things we're going to be able to, we're going to need to offer in that neighborhood. And again, it changes, right? So the library is always changing what we do based on the community needs. So looking at this, you know, we want to look at it now as a, as a picture of what it looks like right now as we're building this. And then it will evolve as the community changes and people move and the kids grow up and all that stuff happens. That's, that's the beauty of the public library is, is it changes with the community. So, but we want to get it right when we first open, right? And we want the community to be able to see themselves reflected in that space so that they feel like it's theirs, right? And I think that's why Holly is successful, because we listened to the community and we built it the way that they asked us to and they really feel at home there. You can see it when you, when you go in and you experience it, you know, like there's a lady that brings her slippers, you know, because she feels like it's, it's an extension of her own space. And we want to recreate that same feel of the, that cozy home, um, home space, uh, in the Northwest as well.
And if I could follow up with a quick question? There, um, so the discussions, I guess, some of the questions that were asked about, um, the, the deciding on location, I, I, I had the impression that the location, um, that were discussed were very acceptable. It was just the research that needed to be done with the community in that location. Is that correct?
Um, through you, Mayor Nettle. So, uh, the location specifics, I'm going to leave corporate facilities. And I'm going to let him speak to any, anything that he feels comfortable sharing around that. Um, but again, like we, it's very early preliminary discussions and, and we'll have to revisit that once we have more information.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Corsair. And thank you so much for, uh, spending the last hour and 15 minutes at the microphone. Those are not easy. Uh, and that was, uh, I learned earlier, it was Lauren's th- third presentation today, right? Perfect. Does, is that two a council and then one earlier or was there one in between?
Two a council and, and one to the Minister of Finance, yeah.
Well, thank you. And I know you've had a long day because I saw you at the start of it and I'm seeing you at the end of it, so.
Well, you too.
Appreciate it. Uh, we're going to move on to the next portion of council. And actually, one, one other item, uh, and, uh, I just want to highlight this. Austin, you're, we don't agree on everything, right? And, and, and that, that's okay. But you put tons and tons of hours in on behalf of your board. And, uh, you know, I've learned some things from you through this process. I, I hope that we're all learning things together through this process, but I just want to say thanks, uh, on behalf of the city, uh, for the work you do. For the love of God, please no one have inquiries.
I don't know.
Announcements, announcements. Carl, can we get a report on how many people are still watching, please? We have one. Perfect. That's, is that Counsel Nagusi?
It's Guzzi.
Are there any announcements? Yeah, Counsel Kungel.
Thank you, um, Mayor Nettle. I, I do have, uh, one announcement, uh, and it's related to information that was shared publicly, uh, today. Uh, and I wanted, uh, as a representative on the Health Unit Board, um, to share that here with members of council, members of the public. On behalf of the, um, Board of Health, if I may, um, we received, um, notice of the retirement of Dr. Charles Gardner, our Medical Officer of Health and Chief Executive Officer. Uh, and while, um, we will be, um, celebrating him, um, I think from today and up to, uh, his last day with us, which is September 30th of 2025, uh, I did want to share, uh, a point of recognition, acknowledgement and deep gratitude. So Dr. Gardner has served in this role in our system with unwavering dedication since 2005. Uh, this was following many years, uh, in other areas, both in Ontario, Zimbabwe, um, New Brunswick and Newfoundland. And over the course of his, uh, tenure, Dr. Gardner has been a steadfast advocate for public health and a leader in fostering healthier communities. Uh, he has served in several very impactful, um, and, uh, leadership positions, including President and then past Chair of, uh, the Association of Local Public Health Agencies, Chair for the Council of Ontario Medical Officers, Medical Officers of Health. Um, and I really do want to highlight just, um, his commitment to excellence, uh, which was recognized through several prestigious awards. Throughout his career, uh, Dr. Gardner has exemplified professionalism, compassion and a vision significantly advancing public health across Simcoe and Muskoka and across the province. He is, uh, brings forward with him always this thoughtful leadership approach, a tireless commitment to improving population health. And, um, I know and I believe you may share with me that, uh, you know, he will leave an enduring legacy. And so, uh, as the Board of Health looks ahead, um, in planning Dr. Gardner's retirement in September of 2025, uh, I'm hoping to take this opportunity to acknowledge his significant impact, uh, of his career with us. And while his absence will be felt deeply, we extend our heartfelt thanks for his many years of outstanding service and look forward to celebrating his remarkable contributions as his retirement date approaches. And there will be more public announcements closer to his retirement in September to invite the public and partners and members, um, of, of staff and more broadly across Simcoe County and Muskoka to celebrate him, uh, in the fall.
Yes, thank you, Counsel Kungel, for, uh, that recognition of, of Dr. Gardner. And, um, certainly on behalf of council, please pass along my, uh, my congratulations on the next step. And, uh, I think there was a, another piece of news that came out of there, which is your, uh, reelection as the, the Chair. And so congratulations on behalf of, uh, of the city as well. I know that your work is valued and, uh, you do a ton of it, so, uh, thank you so much. Uh, are there any other announcements around the table? I'm, uh, seeing none. I'm gonna be as quick as possible. Uh, we are taking citizen applications for the Seniors and Accessibility Advisory Committee. The application deadline's the 31st of January at 4:30 PM. Uh, for information, please email a point@berry.ca or visit berry.ca/commissionsandtaskforces. And again, this is for the Seniors and Accessibility Advisory. I want to extend, uh, thanks to Berry Fire and Emergency Services as well as Rec and Culture and Transit for all of their work at the Simcoe Terrace. So, um, Ms. James Reed, as well as, uh, the Chief, uh, and, um, I'm probably missing somebody. If you can please extend, uh, our thanks and, uh, um, our support for the work that was done. Uh, the communication from the Fire Department and from our city staff, I think was, uh, excellent, letting us know what was going on, communicating with the media, making sure there was somewhere for, uh, these, uh, folks to go and, uh, then get home. So thank you to all of, uh, all of the staff who contributed to that being as seamless as possible in what was, uh, a very cold day and, and an emergency. Beyond that, Winterfest is happening, the first and second of February. Uh, the event will take place at Centennial Park and Wildwire Park. And with our partner programming continuing at a variety of venues throughout the community, for information, please go to berry.ca/winterfest. And just a reminder on the on-street parking restrictions that started December 1st, they go until March 31st from 3:00 to 6:00 AM in the downtown, as well as 12:01 to 7:00 AM in other city streets, uh, and in any hybrid parking lots or waterfront parking. Deputy Mayor, you have bylaws, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Corsair. Leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second and third time and finally passed. Bill 1 to 8.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Corsair. Leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bills 001 through 008. Any questions or comments with regards to the bills on the floor? Seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Corsair. Leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second and third time and finally passed. Bill 9.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Corsair. The confirmation bylaw that leave be granted to introduce this following bill, and this bill be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 009. Any questions or comments from members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. You guys missed it and back in my day, when we were going late, I would call a recorded vote on that. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Uh, moved by Counsel Harvey. Moved by Counselor Harvey, seconded by Counselor Harris, all those in favor? It carries. Hope everyone has a good week and we'll get back to budget next Wednesday.